Good morning, welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors. If you'd please stand and join me in the flag salute, we'll be led this morning by Supervisor Amy Shuckman, who remains standing for a moment of silence, thank you.
Please join me in saluting our country's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, a hundred thousand, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Pick up our Board of Supervisor Matters, first item Supervisor Vanderpoel.
All right, thank you very much, well I just wanted to start off Board of Supervisors Matters and ask if anybody needs any D batteries?
No, I need them for my fan.
As a full pack.
I only need two, so if you need two, I've got two for you.
Well, I thought I'd point that out, okay. So, a couple of things, yesterday the Groundwater Sustainability Agency in the Greater Keweeah made a decision and made an offer to a gentleman to become the executive director of that organization. I think they chose an outstanding person and I look forward to that document and offer hopefully being finalized and that organization getting well on its way to the goal of the formation of the agency. Tomorrow morning at 8:30, there's a meeting of the Tulare County Board of Retirement that I will be attending. This weekend is Father's Day, would like to wish a happy Father's Day to all dads out there, I know that I did it on Mother's Day, so why not on Father's Day? And then actually, Father's Day is extra special for me this year because it's my little, my little daughter's birthday the same day, so she turns two, so baby Emeline June will be two years old, I'm just getting older. And then the next day is my wife's birthday and she's turning thirty, which is pretty wild.
You're not supposed to say that out loud.
I know, but she's really not looking forward to it, so that's why I really want to make it, I want to make it public. It's supposed to be a special day for her. So anyways, and then on Tuesday, June 19th, World Elder Abuse Day, there will be an event held at Government Plaza in the morning, I think that's an outstanding event and really does a great job in bringing awareness to an issue that's really overlooked in our society and really should be addressed and I think through events like this and awareness, we will definitely begin to curb the problem. And then lastly, I wanted to mention, since we're not having a meeting next week, that on Saturday, Richard Rogers, I don't know if anybody knows Richard, but he's a longtime volunteer and very involved with the International Agri Center, he's been battling a real serious illness and they're actually having a blood drive to help collect blood for him at the International Agri Center on the 23rd from 10 to 2, so if anybody's available and willing to donate to support this great cause and help Richard, that would be much appreciated, that will be held at the Heritage Complex in Tulare, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor Shuckman.
Yeah, last Thursday, I drove down to Bakersfield and attended a tour of the Valley Children's Hospital Subspecialty Clinic that was going to be opening there in October, it was really an incredible building and this is something that they are proposing or will be building here in Tulare County at the Caldwell 99 area, so we have a lot to look forward to, I know folks and families are very excited about this and it's going to be a beautiful addition to our landscape. Friday morning, I attended the United Way Power of the Purse with some of our staff members and actually, two of our board reps, our Chief of Staff and Board Rep won a purse, so that's always a good thing, they missed, well not really, but you danced in at one time.
And they didn't ask me back.
And it was the first one and they never asked you back, that's right, so.
I'm okay with that.
Experience is a great teacher.
Exactly. Saturday night, I attended the Family Services Guest Chef Series Dinner Fundraiser and there was a table there from HHSA, a lot of staff there, this is a great organization, they talked about, what is it, thirty-five years Jason, they've been, and this was just started by some, some members of the community of Tulare County getting together and said, "We need some services for, for those women who are abused, domestic violence and all," and they had, actually, there is a, a young lady who was living in Karen's house as a, with her mother and now has gone on to school, gotten her degree and is back working for Family Services, so they, they are a great organization that we have in our community. Today, I have Mental Health Board and then next Tuesday, I will be at the World Elder Abuse Day, I think handing out a proclamation, I don't know, are you going to be there?
Yes.
Okay, well you can hand it out then, and that's it.
Very good. Supervisor Crocker.
Thank you, last week, I'm sure the Chief Norman appreciated everyone that said some prayers for him, if we survived, you know, he may have another tale, but I thought it was very productive. Unfortunately, my fears were proven correct, we did have monarchs that are dead in the Black Mountain Grove, the pure fire destroyed because of lack of management, forest management, there are large giant sequoias that are dead right off the roadside and it's just devastating, it is absolutely devastating to see multiple large giant sequoias in the Giant Sequoia National Monument, the whole purpose of the monument is to protect these trees and they are clearly not being protected. So, the, the lack of involvement, I took a little video and you can, you can see on, on my Facebook page that it, they're, they're, they're there, that was just one snippet, the Black Mountain Grove is, is a large grove, so we just traversed the area right along the, the dirt road that we went and, and so I'm sure there's plenty of other areas of that grove that, that are also devastated, but where we saw, there were plenty, you know, it was, it was interesting though, from outside of that aspect, that, that the fire, that, you know, some areas it hit and other areas it didn't really hit, and so there was, it was kind of a hodgepodge in that particular slope area as far as where it went, but, but, so, so not every giant sequoia was dead, but there were plenty of monarchs that were, there were plenty of smaller ones that were dead as well, but I mean, you know, that's really what I wanted to see, what, you know, are there two-hundred-foot giant sequoias that are, that are now dead and they, they clearly are, there are others that, that survived, that, that the fire didn't get up into the crown and so they're still living, but there were, there were more than enough that I, that I think proved that, that the federal government has, has not taken responsibility for, for what, what's in their care and it, and it's really, it's really sad for our area. This week, I, there is a rally tomorrow for the Safe and Affordable Clean Water Act in Sacramento, that's a coalition that's still trying to, what, what's been SB 623, unfortunately, the governor and this year's budget was not able, they were not able to garner the votes in the Assembly and with the recall in Orange County of Senator Newman and that, I think, may impact the Senate's votes as well, excuse me, as well. And so, there's, there's still a push, but there's, there's emphasis that the legislative leaders will look at that come August of this year, so it's not complete yet, but there is added effort, as well as, we have the Visalia Chamber Awards Dinner this Thursday night, Supervisor Shuckman and I will be attending that, it's always a nice evening to honor some of the, some of the local businesses and, and leaders as far as what they do and Friday, we have the Partnership for the San Joaquin Valley that the Schwarzenegger Administration created to get, add emphasis to the San Joaquin Valley, they will be meeting here in Visalia Friday and, or, excuse me, in Tulare actually, at the, at our Ag Commissioner's Office and there'll be leaders throughout the eight Valley Counties as well as members of the, of the Administration, some Cabinet Members will be there, just discussing issues of relevance and significance.
That's it?
That's it.
Supervisor Ennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Saturday night, I attended the Beef Boosters Big Rally out at Ritchie Ranch, over five-hundred people attended, a lot of money raised, they've built this up from about twenty-eight kids showing beef at Tulare County Fair up to sixty-one this year, so what an improvement, you know, the Beef Project is a year-long project, it's not like raising a hog or a lamb where you've got it for three months or so, this is a year-long project and like I've said in the past, all the different support materials you gotta have, the clippers, the stanchions, the blowers, the grooming, the supplies, all the stuff that goes into this, it's not a cheap endeavor for these kids, so very important that this money is raised to support them, so that's a passion of mine and I was very proud to be there and some of the desserts went for over a thousand dollars apiece, I mean, it was amazing, the outpouring of people and how they support these kids. Today, I'm wearing my Tulare County Sheriff's lapel pin, the one I got when we went to Sacramento to get the grant to build the South County Facility and I must say that that facility is moving forward and hopefully around September, we'll be rolling out and opening up that facility to be used and of course, this morning, we're talking about some solar that's going to help us with the overhead out there, but great, great for the South County to support our, our Justice Center over there and our courthouse, so what a, what a great facility, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. A couple items, the LAFCO meeting this last week, it was authorization to continue the process to consolidate Seville and Yedam into a single CSD, which is a wonderful thing and we have something on our agenda this morning, which I'll call attention to in a bit, but that, that has been a, a long-term objective of those communities and I think one of this board, because it would mean that the water system, which is now owned and operated in Yedam by the county, would be folded into a CSD along with Seville's system and they would then have self-governance over their situation. On Friday, we had a meeting of the San Joaquin Valley Water Infrastructure Authority, we needed to adopt a budget, we're in the process of sort of finishing up the Prop 1 application for funding for Temperance Flat, that process will continue on for a period of time and so we adopted a, an annual budget, but we're looking at it on a quarterly basis, it may mean that we won't actually be either operational or we may be modifying our, our budget going into the next year and so I just wanted to let people know about that. We will not have a meeting next Tuesday and so if you show up, you'll have an empty room to, to come to and I did want to say, welcome to Eddie Valero, my successor, who's sitting out there, Eddie, wave so people can see you, he'll be, he will have, the nice thing for him, and I hope we have a chance to spend a lot of time together, is that he, he won the election outright, so he doesn't have to worry about campaigning through November, which is always a good thing and it gives a, a chance for us to work together.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
I did forget to mention, and this is because I salute dairy on a regular basis, because I'm from a dairy family, but the Salute to Dairy Event in the City of Tulare and the Annual Tulare County Dairy Princess Coronation will be taking place on Friday, this Friday, June 15th, from 6:00 to 10:00 at the Heritage Complex in Tulare, want to congratulate all of the young ladies who have participated in the Dairy Princess Competition and also the Samoyz family for being recognized as the Dairyman of the Year, thank you.
Didn't want to upset you Eddie, but I guess we just did.
Yeah, sorry.
It's a cow.
I thought you were done with, I thought you were done with the, with your comments, I just wanted to make sure.
Mr. Ennis might want to comment on his election too.
I would also like to congratulate Dennis Townsend, who has an architectural business in, in Porterville area, businessman who will be taking my place in January on the board, so congratulations to Dennis.
Very good, all right, through no other matters, we will move on to public comments, anyone wishing to address the board this morning on items which are not on today's agenda but within our jurisdiction are invited to come forward at this time, I do have a name here for our no-fo Gonzalez? Mr. Gonzalez, if you come forward, use the microphone please.
I think it's for an item later on in the agenda.
Is it, is it on the agenda item?
The Chair has an agenda item, so.
Oh, okay, well, when we come with the agenda item, we'll have an opportunity to come forward at that time, very good, thank you. Anybody else wishing to address during public comment period? Good morning. If you please give us your name and address.
I'm a Lieutenant with the Tulare County Sheriff's Office, this is in regards to item 31 on the consent.
Oh, we'll go ahead and do that now, okay, yes.
They told me to.
We're taking up item 31 at this time of our consent calendar, which is going to be pulled off and handled separately, but that's all right, we'll go ahead and do it now.
Okay, we were under, we didn't know if it was going to be called or not, so just, I can wait if you want me to.
No, no, this is fine.
Okay, thank you. There's just an addendum we wanted to add to item 31, this is request number one to approve a capital asset purchase of a thermal imaging camera system, I would like to update board agenda item 31 and revise the wording for request one that currently reads, approve a capital asset purchase of a thermal imaging camera system to be installed on the sheriff's aircraft in the amount not to exceed six-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars, amend it to now read, approve an amendment to Resolution Number 2018-0032 to increase authority to six-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars for capital asset purchase of a thermal imaging camera system to be installed on a sheriff's aircraft, an increase of one-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars from the original request of five-hundred thousand dollars and there is no change to request number two.
And the reason for this was that it, to do it as it was set forth would actually be a, two different requests, one for five-hundred thousand dollars, already approved, and a new request for six-hundred-and-ninety, four, six-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand, so this way, it's all consolidated into one.
Yes, sir.
Are there any questions or comments by former Supervisor Crocker?
Just a comment, I, I think that it'd be nice to have like in six months or so to get a, a status report on what's going on with, with the, you know, cases that were involved with the, with the aerial squadron, just, you know, some of the things that you've been able to utilize it for and things that, that weren't able, just kind of a status report, I guess.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Very good.
The only comment I would have is for folks who don't read the staff report, is this money is coming from a grant from Homeland Security and then the, an amount from Asset Forfeiture Program?
Yes.
There's Donnet County costs.
Donnet County costs.
Correct. All right, any further comments or questions? Entertainer motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
Motion by Supervisor Crocker, second by Supervisor Shuckman, please cast your votes and the votes are unanimous, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, so we will move to our consent calendar now and we've already taken up one item that we needed to and we also need to pull off of our agenda for today, item number seventeen, which will be heard on another subsequent date, and item eighteen, we're going to have a separate consideration for that item now. Item eighteen? Good morning, Rhonda.
Members of the Board, CIO, Mr. Spada, and County Council, Deanne Peterson, the item before you is a request to authorize the Second Amendment between the County of Tulare and the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority for cash advances and repayment. It is a loan that we have made to the SJVIA as the county in an amount of four million dollars, that originally was due on June 30th, 2018 and this amendment would extend the repayment deadline back to 2021, it could, if funds were identified prior to that time, December 30th, 2021, the, all of the loan or partial payments of the loan could be paid from the SJVIA to the County of Tulare, but this would extend the timeframe for the SJVIA to pay back the county. Currently, they do not have the funds available to do a full repayment, we are monitoring the situation and bringing back requests to the SJVIA Board, I believe on a quarterly or I think bi-annual basis and taking a look at, at the end of this fiscal year, what our reserves look like and if we'll be able to do any kind of remittance to the Board.
Questions, comments, Supervisor Crocker?
Just comments, I've, I've asked for this to be pulled because I'm not supportive of this, we've discussed this at the SJVIA Board Meeting, this, there was a, some oral agreement that was reached, what is here in the paper, even though it's closer, I don't believe is what was actually discussed at the initial meeting despite Fresno County Supervisor's disagreement with that, so I, Fresno County is fifty percent larger than Tulare County as far as employees are concerned and they only put in a million dollars more than the four million that we put in and so I, for them to be paid back in this manner, I don't think is fair, nor is what we agreed upon when we gave our last loan amount, so I will not be in supporting, supporting this.
And just for further clarification of what Supervisor Crocker's talking about is that the, the language before us today would have that money being paid back at the rate of a dollar for a dollar, so every dollar, we'd be paid a dollar, Fresno get a dollar and so we would be paid off before Fresno, because obviously, we have four million out, they have five, so we would get paid back and they would still hold, they would get their last million after we're paid back in full. I believe Supervisor Crocker's referring to what he thought to be one that would pay us back at a sooner or faster rate, I guess, or ratio than, than the one that is before us today, is that correct?
Well, if we, we agreed to, I mean, the discussion is public in SJVIA minutes and that's not what we discussed.
And I'll just say, I'm, you know, of, first of all, I was glad to see that this actually came back, from, from my recollection and, you know, I may not be remembering properly, but my understanding was that we would be paid one for one and that the County of Fresno would be repaid last, what Fresno staff had originally proposed was that we would be repaid proportional to the size of the entities that comprised the SJVIA, so basically Fresno would get paid almost two dollars for every one dollar that we got back and is that correct, Rhonda, is that what was originally proposed?
Yes, that was what was originally proposed, so this.
That was originally proposed regardless of what the SJVIA Board had directed staff to bring back, so at the last SJVIA meeting, we had a verbal conversation publicly about being repaid one for one, one dollar, one dollar, and then the County of Fresno would be the last ones to be repaid, so that is my understanding and I, I know that if we do not approve this today, then the agreement would basically make the money be due by June 30th and Tulare County would be repaid back in full if the money existed, but I don't believe that we have sufficient revenue within the entity to repay the four million to Tulare County as of this date, but you know, I, we've really been through a lot in this organization and we finally are at a point where I think that the cash flow is positive and we're in a much stronger position than what we were in, I think there are brighter days ahead and I, and I feel confident that we will be able to get past what we've been through, so I'm supportive, I think that this would be basically resembling what we had agreed to verbally at the last SJVIA meeting.
And I, and I would also be supportive, I, one of the things that, that was very clear is that there is, there is not four million dollars paid back to Tulare right now, that does not exist.
That's a clincher.
However, it is a much more positive picture than we've had, our new consultants come on board, has really introduced some cost-saving measures and I believe that the ability to actually get paid back before this timeframe is, is there because I think we will build up our reserves and we will be, we will have the ability to get paid back sooner, not, not, it'll be according to this formula, but I don't think we're going to have to wait till 2022 to get paid back, are there any other questions?
And I, and I'll just say too, that the, the, the real reason this organization even existed was so that we could basically save on fixed costs and, and save for our employees and even though the organization has undergone financial turmoil, it has done just that, the organization has beat the trend healthcare increase for our county employees and it is to a benefit of our county employees to make sure this organization continues into the future and the second that it doesn't, I think that this board would be very serious in looking at other options.
Entertainer motion, move for approval.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Please cast your votes, votes are four to one, in approval, Crocker opposing, Vanderpoel, Shuckman, Worthley, Ennis supporting, supporting the motion. All right, we'll now take the balance of our consent calendar and before we take action, I did want to point out just a couple of things, they don't need to be taken off, but they're good news stories and I'd just like to kind of point them out, before there was an East Porterville problem with water, there was Seville and Seville has been a problem, it's been the, it's been the, the topic of the United Nations concerns actually, about water quality and water support for that community, going back for, like I said, at least the twenty years I've been on the board, going back even before that time, if you'll recall, the county was required to, or asked to temporarily step in to be a receiver for this, for this, this project, I'm thinking it's probably been ten years or more now, that's what temporary means in government and today, we are awarding a contract under the consent calendar to build an entirely new water distribution center for Seville and that will mean for the first time in a number of years that they won't have a boil notice to boil their water every time they want to drink it because of the contamination concerns we had for their leaky system, so this is a banner day and I just wanted to call attention to that because we've been a long time in coming and it's, and it's great that it's, that it's here and also at no cost to the county, that was another issue, we knew we had this problem, but we didn't know how we were going to fund it, so that was one of the silver linings to the drought. The second thing I wanted to point out was that we're here to accept the work of construction for the Avenue 416 widening and done by Yarbs Grading and Paving of Fowler and this project was, this is the complete, one of the early Measure R projects of a four-laning, a two-lane highway from, all the way from Cutler Rosina to the 99, our thanks to Fresno County for being a major contributor to this because this, this transacts two counties, but I wanted to point out that this project was built ahead of schedule and 1.1 million dollars under budget, so this is a great, another great news, I think we did, I just wanted to call attention to that and so with that, entertainer motion?
Chairman, we have one more.
If I may, request to pull item number six for a slight amendment.
All right.
Very briefly, this item before you, or excuse me, Samantha Ferraro, Board Representative, just a slight amendment to this item, it's a request to approve the 2018-19 Step Up Youth Activities Grants, the following organizations listed in this item are being recommended by the Tulare County Youth Commission, just a slight adjustment, requesting to pull one of the organizations, Tulare County Symphony League, we're still working with them to submit the final documentations for the contracts, we're working with them to get those contracts submitted, they're not quite ready at this time, so requesting to pull that from the, the item before you this morning and it will, it will bring, be brought back at a later date for consideration.
Very good.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments by board members or the public about items on our agenda today, consent calendar?
Thank you.
All right, entertainer motion?
Move for approval of consent calendar with the changes.
I'll second that.
Motion by Supervisor Ennis, seconded by Supervisor Vanderpoel, please cast your votes, votes are unanimous. We've got a little bit of time before our timed items come up, so we will pick up our first untimed item, which is item number 32, a request from Human Resources Development Department to approve the flexible allocation of five existing account clerk positions per personnel resolution. Morning Rhonda again.
Good morning again, Rhonda Schuster, Human Resources Director, the item before you is asking you to take action on five positions that are currently filled, however, we are not reclassifying those individuals, we are asking for those positions to be flexibly allocated up one level, so it'd be to the Account Clerk 3, so that in the future, individuals might be promoted to the 3 level. Additionally, twenty-six current employees are being, the request is to reclassify them from Account Clerk 2, which was formerly Senior Account Clerk, to Account Clerk 3 and this item is kind of the last leg of action that we took at the mid-year budget where we brought in equity increases for the Account Clerk Series, we created a new classification of the Account Clerk 3 and we asked our departments to review those incumbents in those positions to see if they meet the qualifications and had indeed been performing the duties of what the new class of Account Clerk 3 is, so this is finalizing requests that were made from the departments and self-certifying that those individuals meet the qualifications and this would go into effect on June 24th, if approved.
Any questions or comments before members? Public comments, not entertainer motion?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that.
Motion by Supervisor Vanderpoel, seconded by Supervisor Ennis, please cast your votes.
Oops, that was a mistake. Scared you, didn't I?
Okay.
Only one vote counts here.
All right.
I know.
So, the votes are unanimous, forgive me, some people like to play around, the votes are unanimous in support of the motion.
Thank you very much.
And we still have a little bit of time, so we'll take up item number 33, are there people going to be speaking to item 33 here? And we still have a little bit of time, so we'll take up item number thirty-three. Uh, is there, are there people gonna be speaking to item thirty-three here today? Maybe we'll hold off on thirty-three then, 'cause I, I don't, we don't wanna, let's go to item thirty-four, request from the Resource Management Agency to receive a status update on the Traver wastewater system improvement project. Morning, Ross.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and good morning to the rest of the Board of Supervisors, Mr. CIO, um, Council. Hi, I'm, my name is Ross Miller. I'm a chief engineer with the Resource Management Agency. And joining me later during this presentation will be the RMA Associate Director, Mike Washam. I'm here to talk about the Traver wastewater system improvement project and provide an update on this, as well as some requests at the end. Um, I'm gonna start and talk about the project need and history, as well as the CWSRF application that the county submitted earlier this year. Talk about the project status, um, discuss an option to an agreement with a contractor, discuss potential can, future construction financing, financing options, um, a sustainability analysis for future construction, a discussion of the economic benefits of the project, and requests for this agenda item, followed by questions, comments, and discussion. The county operates the wastewater system in Traver as a zone of benefit under the county service area number one. It currently serves a portion of the community, mostly the residential portion on the east side of the railroad tracks that run through the community. The system was constructed in nineteen ninety-two and currently has two hundred and thirteen connections, of which a hundred and seventy-seven are single-family dwellings. There's also a number of vacancy and standby connections as well. The expansion of the wastewater system in Traver has been recommended for some time. There was a two thousand and five Traver Community Sewer Collection and Wastewater Treatment Evaluation, which was then supplemented in twenty fourteen. Uh, expansion was also recommended in the twenty fourteen update to the Traver Community Plan. The current system is, uh, permitted for eighty-nine thousand gallons per day, of which we are currently using about sixty-two percent of capacity, around fifty-six thousand gallons per day, which was our historical peak. There has been, um, in addition to the current service, there has been inter, uh, economic development interest along the Sixth Street Business Corridor, which is right off of the I ninety-nine, and of which there has been a, um, yeah, desire to connect to the sewer system, which would potentially facilitate some development there. And-
Just real quickly, the, the reason why it's not connected now is because it's the railroad track in between, and so part of this project would be then to be able to make that connection.
Absolutely, yes. And it's estimated that if the, um, boundary for the zone of benefit were expanded to include the existing businesses, as well as other, um, currently unserved facility, are, facilities within Traver that are existing, it would use around eighty-two percent of the current permitted wastewater treatment capacity, and would not pose any issues for the, um, sewer main along Merit Drive, uh, which is the main collection. So earlier this, our, last year, um, RMA's brought a, forth a, uh, resolution to apply for a Clean Water State Revolving Fund Grant. It was approved under Resolution twenty seventeen zero four seven three. The application was for a half million dollars for planning and design to the Water Board. The application was submitted on June twenty-first, twenty seventeen, and the project was being expedited to apply for some remaining Proposition One funds, which were expected to, um, be used up by the end of twenty seventeen. After submitting the application, a letter was received that stated that all costs for the project from June twenty-first onwards would be reimbursable when a grant agreement was, um, reached between the county and the state. So for this project and to meet the timeline of applying for the Proposition One funding, um, county entered into an agreement with AECOM to conduct a feasibility study and prepare ninety percent plans and specifications for the project. Uh, on November twenty-ninth, twenty seventeen, the grant application was denied, and the state said they could convert the grant application into a loan application. The, there were a variety of reasons for the denial and the, but it caught staff by quite a surprise, because the aims and goals of the project had been very clear between the county and state from the get-go. So now we are requesting a budgetary transfer to cover the shortfall, which I will return to at a later time. So in setting up the agreement with AECOM, they were to prepare a feasibility report, which has been on hold once staff were, uh, it was placed on hold once staff was informed that, uh, the grant application would not be approved. It also included survey and geotechnical work, which has been completed. It involved the preparation of construction documents for expansion to the collection system and to the wastewater treatment system. Uh, the plans are about ninety percent complete, but again, were put on hold, uh, when the grant application was noted that it would not be funded. Towards this project and towards the end, a environmental impact report, sorry, was completed by the county and adopted in December of twenty seventeen. The EIR would still be valid, because it covers the various components and the possibility that it may be a partial project before a full build-out at a later date. The project also included an updated to the sewer system management plan, a rate study, and a report of waste discharge. Those are on hold pending the final feasibility report and final design. It also included the preparation of a CWSRF construction grant application, which will be on hold pending direction. It would also potentially include, uh, the grant application's also the same as a loan application, so that still could go forward depending on what is recommended today. So the project status, the proposed improvements, um, to the collection system include expanding the collection to Sixth Street and installing a lift station, which would then connect the, uh, wastewater that is collected off of Sixth Street into the existing sewer main. It presents the lowest capital cost for a project to serve Sixth Street, and the existing main along Merit would have enough capacity to include, um, all of the wastewater generated from the current businesses off of Sixth Street. And it's designed as well that it could be converted into a force main to convey it along Merit for expansion, if more development were to go in along Sixth Street. It would also include the expansion of, um, the collection system to include the northern part of the community. There's a significant portion of the community, which is currently undeveloped and has been zoned for future housing development, which this project would aim to facilitate that by adding a collection, additional collection pipe to serve that area. The treatment system, uh, discussed would include, uh, packaged plant for the wastewater treatment. These plants would be similar to what is used at, potentially similar to the plant that is used for treatment at the Bob Wiley Detention Facility. The current method of treatment, which is very low cost, would not be acceptable under current permitting standards. So if the county wishes to expand treatment capacity, we'd have to significantly improve the treatment quality as well. And an advantage of these is they are scalable, so we could, or the county could later come in and add additional, um, treatment units, which could then double capacity from what is currently, uh, proposed at a hundred thousand gallons per day to two hundred thousand gallons per day, very easily and very cost-effectively. The plan here shows, the, the black lines show the current, um, collection system, and the red show the proposed collection system, including a, the proposed future force main along Merit with, from the proposed, um, collection, uh, from the proposed lift station, which at the short term would instead just collect into the main, the existing sewer main there. The agreement with AECOM also included a fifty thousand dollar option for them to complete the final construction plans for the treatment and collection system. This would make the project more eligible for various other funding sources besides CWSRF. It was originally included from the project because of CWSRF eligibility requirements, and because it would have been included with an A CWSRF construction grant, which, again, a, a grant is very unlikely to be granted. So for the project, there's a variety of construction financing options that have been explored. There are USDA loans, which would range from two and a eighth percent to three and a half percent for a forty-year term. Uh, CWSRF loans would, uh, be at one point eight percent for a thirty-year term. There could also be a loan of local funds, which would be subject to Board of Supervisors determination, both for the rate and for the term. And there's the possibility that there may be small grants available for certain components of this project. This could include grants from CDBG, USDA, or CWSRF. This would, at most likely, cover very small portions of the project, such as capacity at the new wastewater treatment plant to serve existing households, but it would not provide, uh, funding for any of the expansion. These would also be competitive grants, and even an application submitted may not receive an award, and the funding, again, would be limited to small portions of the project. Staff reviewed the construction cost for the short-term project, which would, again, would be the hundred thousand dollar treatment, um, package, our hundred thousand gallon per day package plant at the wastewater treatment facility, as well as the mains on the south portion of Sixth Street, south of Merit. Um, the crossing of the railroad track, as well as the lift station and connection into the existing project, are into the existing main. For the, for that, o- under that condition, for the project to remain, um, feasible, it would require raising the single-family dwelling rate to around sixty-five dollars per month, which is the affordable level for the community, as determined by, um, industry standards, which is set at one and a half percent of the median household income for the community. This would put it on par with the, um, rates charged in most of the other county's own, zones of benefit, as well as many of the community service districts and public utility districts in the north part of the county. As part of the feasibility, if an average connection fee of seventy thousand dollars were paid by the existing businesses along Sixth Street, which of course would be, um, proportionate to the actual waste generation from each of the facilities, and an average rate of three hundred and twenty-five dollars per month were paid by those businesses, uh, the project would be feasible. That's about five times the single-family dwelling rate, and was selected at this, because the existing businesses there, based on various design standards for those types of facilities, on average would produce about five times the wastewater of a single-family dwelling. As well, um, the final component to make the project financially sustainable would be a connection fee of around four thousand dollars per single-family dwelling unit for the two hundred houses that are proposed as part of the community plan in the north part of the community, the currently undeveloped area. This would put the connection fee on par with, but slightly lower than that, which is charged by the city of Visalia.
Thank you, Mike Washam, RMA Associate Director. Just to kind of highlight economic benefits, but just to kind of summarize what we're looking at today. Uh, it's unfortunate that the application was denied for the grant. Uh, we're looking at an OT three oh eight to, to make the, uh, the RMA's budget whole for that, for the planning status there. Uh, an option for an agreement to, uh, or an option to the agreement to complete, to one hundred percent the plans and feasibility study, so we're ready to go after grant op, options and opportunities or, or loans. So that's what we're looking for the board for direction on, on whether you wanna look towards loans or only go after grants. Those are the things that we're looking at. And, um, with that in mind, the economic benefits of this is, as we said, along Highway ninety-nine, the commercial highway, commercial opportunities are, are great for that site. Uh, what we need to do is get that line underneath the rail line and put down Sixth Street. Uh, this project can be phased going forward, so we're not necessarily building out everything. But when we look at that, we look at, um, the opportunity zone is a new, uh, potential, uh, investment catalyst, I'd say. Uh, Cosmont, uh, consulting firm just sent out a blast to, uh, all of the economic development managers throughout the state regarding the enterprise zone, and they're, they're listing this as the, the, um, greatest tax incentive since the ten thirty-one exchange. So there's opportunities there, but we still, we're on the very lead edge of that, so things are still being worked out. So there's potential there as far as investment dollars coming into the community. Uh, and Traver is identified as one of those census tracts that is an opportunity zone area. For housing, when you look at housing, there's, there's potential for two hundred units to be built up there. When you look at, uh, as, as Ross was covering, the engineering and the technical side of this, is that the connection fees cover that and, and, and an increased, uh, monthly rate. However, you also have to look at the valuations. You're looking at, if, if you're to put two hundred homes in there and say a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home price, which probably be fairly reasonable for that, you're looking at, uh, what, fifty million dollars of assessed value for a full build-out, and then that relates to half a million dollars of property tax, uh, coming in per year. You're looking at building out on the commercial side. Uh, a gas station's about two to three million dollars to construct. You're looking at sales tax revenue from that, as well as property tax. Uh, so there's opportunities there for fast food, for potentially highway commercial type of things, gas stations, fast food, potentially a hotel, because of the location next to the, uh, the Kings River is so close to that. So there's potentials for that type of thing, and that would dramatically increase revenues above and beyond the sustainability level for this project. And then finally, um, we've had inquiries from Foster Farms regarding use of our facility. Uh, right now, they're currently truck, trucking their wastewater up to a facility they have in, in, um, another plant they have, and, and putting it to their ponding basins there. They're looking at potentially having it come through the county system, which will again add some revenue and be sustainability for the, for the ag industry, as it's always under attack for water quality issues. This would be able to provide a benefit for them as well. So that's just kind of a summary of where we're at, and, uh, we're open for questions or, or comments from the board.
I wouldn't make a couple of comments too, because it's not only looking forward to the future is the potential, but I want to talk about the recent past, because we've seen a lot of development in this community. So, uh, Foster Farms is doing a sixty million dollar project?
They're, they've just, they're, they've just completed their organic, uh, feed mill for, uh, the chicken feed, which was a fifteen, seventeen million dollar project. There's two other projects that they have proposed that will total about sixty million dollars in, in total between the two projects.
And then Bravo Farms is in the process now of doing a major upgrade of their facilities, which is a very popular eating establishment there.
Right.
Uh, RJ's has done a major expansion. I mean, if you, if you saw this community, this area about fifteen years ago versus what it's like now, there's been tremendous upgrades that are occurring right now in that commercial side right there of the prop, and more space available to do a, a little lot more. Uh, also, where the proposed two hundred acre, two hundred home site is, that has been proposed for housing for many, many years, uh, and our only holdup really has been the lack of ability to provide services. We have eleven homes that were done by self-help. They had to have a lottery. There were so many people seeking to purchase these homes that they, they had to have a lottery, because they, they had to, a standing room only type situation with those eleven homes. So this is not a pie in the sky kind of a thing. There, there are things happening. There are things that will happen, but without the water resources and the sewer resources, it can't happen. And so what we're asking for today is, uh, fifty thousand dollars to complete the study, and then looking at options going forward, and, and, you know, my thought, we, we look at all of the above, uh, what makes the most sense. Uh, you know, we have the ability, one of the benefits we have of not having impact fees in the county, is that when people look at affordable housing, that, that becomes a, the thing that helps them to build affordable housing in this community. Yes, they're gonna have costs, like the, like the, the, uh, hookup fees and that sort of thing, but that, that only, you know, that, that's real money that goes for real projects. So it's not some- it's not some, something where you put money in a block box someplace and hope to use it someday down the road for building a park or something. So there's real opportunity in this community, and also, I just want to say finally, that in the old days of redevelopment, this community got shortchanged because it generates a significant amount, just because of the improvements that are there now. And I'm, I'm talking about before the, the increased evaluation that we've had in the last five years. This, this community generated a significant amount of money for redevelopment, and we did not spend it. And so when it was time to pay the state, we paid that, we just turned that money over to the state of California. It was lost, but it's still generating that revenue. And we, we, you know, we owe it to this community, I believe, to, to take that revenue and put it back and invest in the community, and it will pay rewards back to this county, I'm convinced.
May I, may I add one comment? You, you sparked one, one other point there, is that we also put in a family healthcare clinic. That helps with the affordable housing future potential, because when proponents of, of housing development go in, there's a checklist of what's in the community, the provisions in there. So this will make that score better by having that healthcare clinic there will score applications for affordable housing in a, in a better light, which will make it more, more, a higher potential of getting affordable housing built.
Are there any questions, supervisor?
And I would just say that I think that if we're able to complete this study, I think that it will yield to many more infrastructure improvements there. And if you look at all the growth and development and proposed projects, expansions, et cetera, that have happened in Traver, it's all been happening with constrained infrastructure. And, and if we can enhance that infrastructure, I think that the, the sky really is the limit for, for that community, given its location right along Highway ninety-nine, so I'm very supportive of it.
Any other questions, comments? Anybody from the public?
Several con, or questions. Three questions on the project itself and then one on process. We're talking about sustainability and how the two hundred homes would get it to that sustainable level. How, how much more capacity would we have, or would that cap us out at capacity as far as, a, a, as well as tie that in with if Foster Farms gave us their wastewater, does that cap us out, and we're at the same situation we're at today, but we've just added more stuff?
So to answer your question, including all of the existing facility, our, the existing facility is along Sixth Street. Before the plant, or at the current capacity of the plant, the current permitted capacity, we could add probably fifty to sixty of the proposed homes. Before, we would need to expand the wastewater treatment plant and install the package units as described and go to a hundred thousand gallons per day to add the remainder of the houses that are proposed.
So how much additional breathing room would we have with the expansion? Assuming that the two hundred homes goes in and we, and we get Foster Farms to go on, are we going to have breathing room, or are we going to be in a similar type situation where we're almost at capacity?
At that situation, we'd be around, I believe, eighty-five percent of capacity. So we would need to start planning for future expansion, but as already described, the package units are modular and two more could be added at a very affordable cost.
Because the pipe, the piping system's all in place, all you're talking about is what you need to write at the wastewater treatment facility itself.
Yes, correct.
So, so for it to be sustainable, we need it to be at capacity with this new project and then build again? So, I mean, the sustainability factor is, doesn't seem like it's...
The sustainability factor was based on the ex, the wastewater treatment plant being built at the current time. The plant, again, the expansion there could be delayed until a future date when it's getting closer to those two hundred, well, the later hundred and fifty to hundred and forty homes being built. So until such time as those are becoming imminent, it would be able to be sustainable at just the ex, collection expansion along Sixth Street and into the existing sewer main.
And how much do we subsidize the Traver Zone of Benefit right now?
The Traver Zone of Benefit, I believe, is subsidized to, Sherman, do you remember? Is it five thousand? It's approximately a cash subsidy of around five thousand dollars per year from the Board of Supervisors.
And then as far as from the process standpoint, I just want to, you know, there was some comments made that we were kind of taken off guard in the, in the, in the grant request. So what, so are there mechanisms, have, do we determine what, what the state was looking for so that we can try and avoid those issues in the future for other grants that we're seeking?
Yes, we did. We expressed early on to the state that a large component of this project was going to be the expansion to Sixth Street, which is an existing business corridor. The state reps we were working with at the time said that would be an acceptable part of the overall project. We also expressed that this was, that there was not really an existing groundwater problem, but by improving treatment from the current level to that which would be produced by the package plant, it would further improve groundwater quality, be, which is one of the main goals of CWSRF. Because there was no existing problem, it just got moved off of any of the priority list because they don't want us to take water from good to better, they more want to deal with significant problems and either make them acceptable.
Well, I, I'd be in favor of financing option as far as, I think it's, we're capped on the CWSRF funding, the loan, where there's a, there's a cap as far as how much we can apply for. Is that, I believe, what the staff report said?
Yes, under CWSRF, there is a cap which is based on a fixed fee per number of connections that would be requested. At the current time, the CWSRF loan, this system would be well below the limit for that.
So utilizing that, as well as making sure that we're also getting local rates in line so that there's a little bit of, there's a, there's some skin in the game for Traver, so that they're getting a benefit, so that there was, it would be more of a combination. We're helping them and they, you know, help themselves a little bit.
If I may add a point to that, I, I fully agree with that statement, and some of, pretty much any of the grants that we may try to apply for to provide additional funding for this would require that the rates be somewhere in line with one and a half percent of MHI, so they may also require that rates be raised as well.
Any questions, comments? Public comments? You're taking a motion?
With approval, second.
Votes by Supervisor Inter, second by Supervisor Crocker. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Thank you, Ross.
Thank you.
Board members. All right, now we'll pick up our timed item. There may be more time involved in item three, so I think we'll pick up item number four first, and that's a request from General Services Agency to take public comments, consider adoption resolution, making certain findings, approving a solar power purchase and energy storage services agreement. Morning, John.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Spada, counsel, John Hess, General Services Agency Director. Thank you, Mel. So the presentation is regarding the solar energy production project. We'll do some quick background, provide an update from the May presentation, request direction for a paving allowance, sole source approval, and then conclude with requested action. So it's a power purchase agreement for seven county sites, including three battery storage devices. The total project size is nine thousand four hundred and forty-five kilowatts. The objective is to save the county bottom line money, almost twenty-one million dollars in funds.
Excuse me, John, I, I hate to interrupt you.
Sure.
But I didn't, I violated my own rules here. This is a public hearing, and so with the public hearing is now open as you begin your presentation.
Okay, very good.
That's what happens when council changes, yep, you've been doing this for twenty years.
Old dogs take the hard trips.
So we will be saving money with the project, approximately twenty point eight million dollars at our current financial assessment. The proposal was received from NG in two thousand seventeen. We've done extensive review internally and externally with professional consultants, as well as county councils prepared the materials. We've worked with other county cons, other counties to see about their similar projects, and so today we're seeking approval for the agreement. So changes that have been made since we presented this last month, about six weeks ago, we are recommending moving forward with the Civic Center East project. That will have a thirty-year benefit of approximately one million dollars, so it has a nice cash flow positive, not major, but certainly enough to add to the portfolio. The final combined PPA rate is eleven point ten cents per kilowatt. No major changes to the PPA term itself, still twenty-five years, ninety percent performance guarantee. Technical specifications and provisions were prepared by Arc Alternatives. Those outline the construction design parameters. This is sort of a design-build type project, so we give them those specifications and provisions, and they build it accordingly. The panel arrays have been modified, I'll, I'll show you on a slide here in a moment, specifically at the juvenile detention facility, as well as a canopy-mounted array was added here at the CIO board office. This is the financial analysis that was presented in May. The most important figure, of course, is the bottom line thirty-year cumulative financial benefit at twenty-one point nearly four million dollars, twenty-one three hundred and sixty-nine thousand. This slide shows in the lime green on the screen the colors, the, the boxes that have changed since the last month's presentation. Again, most importantly is the bottom line at twenty million eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, which is a decrease of five hundred and forty-one thousand from that analysis. And I wanted to point out a couple reasons as for that decrease, because I'm sure that question would be asked, which is, one, the relocation of the panels at the probation facility, two, the inclusion of the first project. As you can see, that has a higher weighted PPA rate at twelve point six-two, so it brought the average PPA rate up since it's a, a new site to be added to the portfolio, and then as well as the paving allowance, which I'll show in a minute. We're actually going to be getting a, a overall savings on that, but it did add to the project portfolio as well. So as mentioned, here were the original panel arrays for the juvenile detention facility. They were immediately to the north of the building in the ag area. The probation department has requested those to be relocated to the east next to the warehouse, and that will accommodate their future long-term construction plans where they might have some youth programs and various different probationary programs that they would use on that north end property, which is much closer to their, their buildings. That is further away, so it did create an additional cost for that particular location for electricity drawing those panels out further. As mentioned, we are requesting to proceed as a sole source approval with California One, the parent company of NG, in accordance with California Government Code. This was presented previously and is pursuant to, as I say, Government Code. It's a common practice for solar energy projects. Extensive amount of time and resources have been invested up to this point to vet the proposal and ensure that it's in the county's best interest. We have consultants who believe that it surely is, and we as well recommend at this stage that it's in the county's best interest financially, even with the conservative estimates that we presented today, as well as last month. Those were done over several stages of review. We have also importantly contacted the utility companies, multiple representatives there to identify if there's going to be any pending rate changes that would materially impact the financial outcome or viability of this project. And all of them have said confidently, no, that with our time-of-use grandfathering, we are going to be as, in a great position as we possibly can be going forward with their utility rates. And as I mentioned previously, soliciting an RFP would add nine to twelve months, maybe shorter, maybe longer, certainly an additional expense. This is a dynamic industry with prices fluctuating and changing, certainly on a weekly, monthly basis, so more time could create more risk to the county and variability in the outcomes. Final request is to discuss the paving allowance. As I mentioned earlier, the cash flow increased as a result of including a paving allowance. This is to come back and fix and enhance the paving at two county locations that I'm, I'm proposing as part of the project. The allowance that is going to be provided through the cash flow is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We would only recover, or rather, it would only be costed out to us at about four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, so that's a savings to the county of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're paying essentially sixty-six percent of this by virtue of the way the PPA rate premium is calculated and then applied to the two different sites. So we're, I, I'm requesting the board to identify the, the sites that would be utilized or will receive the benefit of this allowance. As a recommendation, I've included five hundred thousand at Civic Center West, which is the facility here, west of Woodland, and then two hundred and fifty thousand at Government Plaza. The, both, many of our county facilities are in sure need of paving. I think Civic Center West is one of the greatest need areas, and this is a great opportunity to undertake that project, as well as do some fixing over at Government Plaza. Capital projects can also match money up to five hundred thousand to be included in the CIP in a few weeks if the board would like to enhance even that investment at this time. So we can return to that at the end if, for discussion if necessary. So in summary, the program benefits are that it will generate, of course, twenty point eight million dollars savings, which is about a half million lower than we had projected six weeks ago, but still very healthy over a thirty-year project. Could be much higher depending on how far the future utility rates escalate. The savings would be passed on to the affected county departments, thereby saving their budgets. The projects lock in a fixed electricity rate for twenty-five years, a great benefit to the county. NG will utilize local subcontractors and contractors. The county has no operational or maintenance responsibilities for twenty-five years. I mentioned previously that on the, after that twenty-five years, we have the responsibilities, but we also receive one hundred percent of the benefits at that time. So I mentioned also previously that the project is designed at approximately sixty-six percent of the electrical needs to avoid over-consumption charges. That would even come down as we do electric or energy efficiency projects, so even gets us down closer, but still not to a place where we feel like we're going to be risking overpaying for electricity we don't need. So with that, and there's other benefits as well that I mentioned previously last month. So with that, I would request that the board conduct a public hearing in accordance with California Government Code to consider the, the power purchase agreements and associated site leases, adopt a resolution making findings in accordance with Government Code related to sole source, approve a, the power purchase and energy storage agreement associated with a site lease for the period of twenty-five years after the final commercial operation date, approve a paving allowance of seven hundred and fifty thousand at the selected sites or the staff-recommended sites, and then authorize the chairman to sign the agreement and other related documents. And with that, be happy to answer any questions or receive comment.
I did have a question for you, John. At the Juvenile Justice Center, I'm assuming we've taken into consideration that this is a flood plain that we're building on?
Yes.
We have a flood project that's designed to actually move the channel significantly further to the north, but that's not done yet, and that's still, it's still in the pending stage, but I just wanted to make sure we were aware of that.
Yeah, we provided those maps to NG to incorporate into their plans.
Very good. Okay. Are there any other questions?
I'll wait.
Okay. Supervisor Crocker?
Yeah, I, I wanted to see what the timeframe for completion, if, if approved today, what, when would these projects, these seven sites be completed?
Yes, so Mr. Ashu Jain and Mr. Jeffrey Waldhouse are here from NG, and they're prepared to speak to that with great detail, so if they can make their way up to the podium and answer that. In essence, we would surely have a couple weeks of finalizing the actual contract materials, get them signed between now and perhaps the end of the month or July one, at which point they have, you know, the, the project to undertake, and so I'll let Mr. Waldhouse discuss that.
Sure. Jeff Waldhouse, Lead Project Manager, NG Services out of Pasadena. So all sites would be online by August twenty nineteen. Several sites would come online before then, but at the latest, all sites would be online by August twenty nineteen.
Good. And I know the ag commissioner has asked for additional consideration for, for her office site, so is, are we looking at that as, as a future item to come forward?
So, yes, we did a, a very, very rapid research and analysis on that project, and it would be beneficial, but it would be, it's too quick for us to turn around in this particular project. However, because it's a smaller building, we probably could do that as a direct purchase, which would significantly increase the, the financial feasibility for the ag commissioner going forward. So earlier on the agenda, for example, they had some one-time monies that they're transferring to capital, although that may not be earmarked necessarily for this kind of project. As they obtain annual one-time monies, those can be transferred to capital projects, and then maybe in a couple of years, we have enough money, about a half million dollars would be needed to do their project.
And then lastly, you alluded in the, in the presentation to energy efficiency. Are we also going to be looking at a formal plan to, to do audits at our county sites and make sure that we are maximizing the efficiencies that are, that are quite obvious around here?
Yeah, yes. Many of our sites need quite a bit of energy improvements, and so that's going to be our next phase. As soon as we get this settled, we're going to be working with the, the countywide facilities ad hoc committee to engage that process. That can materialize in a couple different ways, through a solicitation process, utilizing existing partners, nonprofit and utility company partners, to do some of the audits, perhaps even for free or through, you know, the reduced rates that we're paying in our electricity bills. So that, we would be coming back to the ad hoc committee in the next few weeks for that, flesh that plan out, and then come back to the board for a much larger discussion.
And just a, a comment that, that was brought up about making sure that we're, that our, the solar is undersized, and the, and the reason is you only get wholesale rates for any consum, any energy that, any electricity that you're generating above and beyond your consumption. So if you're getting two cents a kilowatt hour, and we have a rate of eleven... So if you're getting two cents a kilowatt hour, and we have a rate of eleven cents, we're losing nine cents a kilowatt hour for every kilowatt that we're generating that we're not using, so it doesn't make sense. So people that say, I want to be completely off the grid, that's great, but they're, they are paying for unnecessary electricity for that.
All right. Any other questions?
Just one quick comment, since Supervisor Crocker brought up the Ag Commissioner. I just, I know I had mentioned to you, John, about the International AgroCenter looking at doing a solar project on their facility, if there's any opportunity to collaborate with them or do something that would be mutually beneficial. Definitely make sure you make contact there, too.
Very good.
Or they can, can they tap into the Edison place right next door? No, I'm just kidding.
Some extension cords.
At this time, I will entertain public comment on this matter. Anybody wishing to address the board on this matter during the public comment, public portion of this, or invite you so at this time. Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Question. So, John, if we were to do this project on our own, like, purchase all of this, how much would it cost?
You know, actually, I don't know that number. I was asked that previously. I know early on, this is many months ago, it was about a forty million dollar total project. I don't know if NG is prepared to put that number out there, but ultimately, the cost of the full installation is NG's responsibility, so that may be a number that Mr. Jain can discuss.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ashu Jain, NG Services. So that's an internal pricing number, but I'll be happy to share it with the board. It's a little over twenty-seven million.
But then we would, we would reap all, we wouldn't have to pay any, like, the eleven cents per kilowatt?
So if we, that is correct. There are a couple of different delivery methodologies, one of which is the direct purchase. So if the county were to obtain financing, or if we had twenty-seven million dollars theoretically ready to go to just purchase it outright, we would then own it free and clear, we would maintain and operate it, and we'd receive one hundred percent of the production and not pay, we'd be perhaps closer to that off-the-grid mentality, even the sixty-six percent off-the-grid method there. But there's, there's financial risks associated with that.
Sure.
And one thing I will say there, too, Supervisor Crocker, is that was originally the avenue that was pursued, and then the CReds Energy Bond Program was eliminated, and that was definitely one of the best ways to finance if you were going to proceed down the financing route instead of just buying outright with cash, so. And then you got all the maintenance costs ongoing that we don't have to incur because they're doing that.
And then my other question would be, I understand that the Utilities Commission is going to be looking at rates, and is this eleven cents, they're going to be changing the time where the peak usage is and whatnot, is, when is that coming about?
Sure, so that's a, that is a very good question with, we can, you know, go into great detail on that, but to put it simply, all of the utility companies in California have been working on revising their rates to what's called the time-of-use structure, which will apply across the board, you know, residential, commercial, and so forth, that people will be utilized, being paid, they'll be applied a greater rate during the higher times of use, which is going to be four PM to eleven PM or two PM to eleven PM. The county, as a large sort of commercial user, as a large, you know, business user, obviously our high uses are during the eight AM to five PM hours, so we aren't impacted except for the tail-end part of the day. Those rates have been published, and they are public. Some of the utility companies, perhaps in Southern California, are further along in that process, but we are talking for Edison, which is the primary utility company here in Tulare County. It's many, it's many months until anything is actually finalized, but we have seen their, seen their rates as they've been published.
And those rates are?
Mr. Jain probably speaks to that.
So those rates, we know what those rates are, even though they are not cast in stone, but SCE has published those rates, and we've gone through the, CPUC has gone through the process with PG&E and SDG&E, so, and they've agreed to those rates. So we know what the rates are going to be, and the savings are calculated on the future rates. So they're already, the savings include the change in the time-of-use periods and the rates that are going to be applicable probably in another year or so for SCE.
And we have received the grandfathering, and I know that's kind of a casual way of putting it, but we have locked in existing rates for about nine years. It was a ten-year lock period, and we're probably a year into that. So for the first nine or ten years of our cash flow analysis here, it includes the grandfathering of those rates as well.
Well, no, it's not very often that rates are decreased, so we don't have to, I assume, worry about rates decreasing to where our eleven cents is more than the typical rate.
Yes.
Any other question or comments from board members? I entertain a motion.
Moving to approve.
Motion, Supervisor Crocker.
I'll second that.
Supervisor Ennis, please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous, and the public hearing is closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. We will now move to item number three, a public hearing, request from the Resource Management Agency to deny the appeal filed by Christine Hurd at AL and affirm the Planning Commission's approval of special use permit number PSP one-eight dash zero-two-two. And I do have a script I'm required to read here. This is a hearing to consider the appeal related to the Planning Commission approval of special use permit number PSP one-eight dash zero-two-two for an assisted living facility, the Magnolia Group. That permit was approved by the Planning Commission at its May ninth meeting. This hearing is being held on June twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, at ten fifteen AM at the twenty-eight-hundred West Burl Avenue of Isaya, California, nine-three-two-nine-one facility, and is at the request of Christine Hurd at AL and the appellants. The appellees are Arnolfo and Esperanza Gonzalez. Appellants and appellees are the parties. The hearing is open to the public. However, if any member of the public disrupts the hearing, he or she will be asked to leave. The board shall hear all pertinent evidence offered by all interested persons. The technical rules of evidence shall not apply. The parties have the right to call and examine witnesses and to introduce and rebut evidence. Any exhibits offered should be given to the clerk seated in front, and all persons giving evidence are deemed to be testifying under oath. The parties shall remain civil to each other and any witnesses at all times. First, RME staff will give a presentation on this project. Appellants will then make their presentation. We will then allow for a response by staff, the appellees, and then a final response by the appellants. At the conclusion of both parties' presentations, we will open this hearing up to public comment. So the parties may come forward this time. Is Christine Hurd, or, yeah, want to come forward?
Verify the public hearing is now open. Do we open it?
Yes, the public hearing is now open, and do either, do either parties have any questions as I've read the instructions to you this morning? All right. Then at this time, I'm not going to ask all these people to identify themselves right now. We'll do that, when you come forward, if you please, would identify yourself rather than start that process now. RME staff, you may now make your presentation, and afterwards, the appellees, Arnolfo and Esperanza Gonzalez, may make any comments.
If it pleases the board, Chairman Worley, Supervisor, CIO, Michael C. Spada, County Counsel, I am Aaron Bock, Chief Planner.
What is your middle initial since you announced, Mr. Spadas?
I am Aaron Arbock.
Oh, Aaron Arbock.
Excuse me, one more, before you start, Aaron. Folks, I'm sorry, I didn't realize there were so many of you were here, and I was going to have you come up and identify yourselves, but I'm going to have you do that as you come up to testify. So if you want to take your seats, I don't want to have you stand. It'll take a while to do the presentation, and I don't want you to be standing all that time, so I apologize for that. All right, Aaron, continue, I'm sorry.
Aaron Arbock, Chief Planner, Tulare County Resource Management Agency, and before you today is the appeal of special use permit eighteen dash zero-two-two, appellant Christine Hurd at AL versus the appellee, the Magnolia Group, Arnolfo and Esperanza Gonzalez. This is an assisted living facility in the RA one-hundred zone. By way of background, the property was purchased because of its existing use permit for a contractor storage yard on the site at Lewis Lane and East Prosperity, east of the city of Tulare. The Magnolia Group started the building permit process. The project was sent to Project Review Committee on February fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen for consideration of a new use permit for an eighteen-bed assisted living facility. This was heard before the Planning Commission on May ninth, two thousand and eighteen, where several of the appellants showed up to voice their concerns and stand in opposition to the project. The project was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission. Christine Hurd appealed the decision on May twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen. It is of note that the board passed proclamation of critical shortage of healthcare facilities in Tulare County on June fifth, two thousand and eighteen, for three reasons. First of all, the Planning Commission, in voicing their concern for such facilities, approved this project, noting that they are necessary for Tulare County. Second, with the proclamation, there has been a reduction in healthcare jobs in the area of Tulare, and this would provide the potential for healthcare employment. And in addition, the state allows up to six beds by right in any facility, so to get to eighteen beds, that's just a matter of financing this project. So the location and surrounding neighborhood, the location, as stated, is east of the city of Tulare on Prosperity. The surrounding neighborhood is generally rural residential, but as stated at the Planning Commission, there are many businesses operating out there, both for farming and otherwise. The site plan itself doesn't change the existing facility, most of the improvements are interior to it, but as you'll see, the existing use permit was for much more intensive use than what is being proposed here. So dating back to two thousand and thirteen, you can see from the aerial photos, there was a contractor storage yard for a paving operation that had up to fifty trucks or vehicles located on-site at any given time. As you can see from the aerial photos, they also included quite large trailers that used to pull into the facility, and we think there was up to fifty, fifty parking stalls for the existing operation, all the way from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and seventeen. And you can see the increase in the businesses in the surrounding area and uses, more intensive uses during that period. So appellants' allegations, as written in the letter, are the zoning was inconsistent in regards to the categorical exemption. There was increased traffic, states that twenty-four-hour care facility employees and emergency services will create traffic and safety issues, and that there would be increased water usage. The stated ninety percent of the neighbors had to sink their wells deeper during the drought. So staff will respond to each one of these separately. Response number one, inconsistent zoning. A categorical exemption is the appropriate document under CEQA, as this project does fit the zoning, and no new development is being proposed as far as expanding the footprint of the buildings, and there was no comment from the city, which they had every right to do within their urban development boundary under the memorandum of understanding, and they had actually commented to the previous use permit, so there was no comment from the city this time. The RA zone under section sixteen-two-B allows hospitals and sanitariums with a use permit in the RA zone, so a living care facility is a less intensive use than either one of those. Although not spelled out specifically in section sixteen, living, assisted living facilities definition are a public or private residential facility providing a high level of long-term personal or nursing care for persons such as the aged or chronically ill who are unable to care for themselves properly. So by definition, this would fit under hospitals easily. In regards to increased traffic, the current use permit, the one for the contractor storage yard, allows for approximately fifteen employees, fifty vehicles, including construction, trailer, water storage vehicles, and allowed up to forty-four trips per day. That's the existing contractor storage yard permit. The new project is estimated to have twenty-four employee trips and ten guest trips per day, plus the occasional emergency vehicle, which will be less than the forty-four trips allowed under the existing permit, so it's a reduction from what's currently allowed. One of the comments was that the Prosperity and Oakdale were collector streets. Technically, as we look at this under CEQA, under the California Environmental Quality Act, we look for impacts, and this would definitely be a less-than-significant impact if we were getting towards thirty-five trips, given that those roadways, Prosperity, Oakdale, Oakmore, are major arterials under the city of Tulare's twenty-thirty-five general plan. Arterials as defined by their general plan, as this is within their urban development boundary, are arterials are moderate speed-through streets with average daily traffic, over ten thousand vehicles per day, allowing direct access for non-residential and high density. It was noted in the letter that this is a thoroughfare between the cities of Tulare and Visalia, so it definitely fits within the definition of a major arterial, as noted by the city. Now, Tulare County's general plan's a little bit different. We do consider collector streets, those in which have up to the capacity of level of service C to thirteen thousand eight hundred average daily trips. This by definition, under a traffic study, would be considered an arterial, but we only have two lane collectors named in the county in our general plan. Even still, that goes up to thirteen thousand eight hundred average daily trips before it trips level of service to D, and we are allowed to have level of service D in the county. Given that, keeping those numbers in mind, we look to TCAG to see if this trips any levels of service thresholds with the thirty-plus trips it may provide per day. Looking at the Highway Performance Monitoring System, Prosperity, back in two thousand and fourteen, had five thousand trips on it, well, less than ten thousand suggested for a major arterial, and as of two thousand and seventeen, had six thousand two hundred and thirty-four. Oakdale, Oakmont had one thousand six hundred and ninety-three trips. So thirty-four trips is not going to trip any levels of significance for CEQA. As far as the safety, there was a statement that there was an accident in the locale without any absolute proof of that during the Planning Commission hearing. There was no evidence proffered by the appellant. There were some statements that there was some near misses at the location, which would make sense with the large-scale trailers and equipment that was being moved in and out of the site. This proposal would not have those same occurrences. So the last statement was increased water usage. The existing site has a five-horsepower pump. It served water storage vehicles and equipment, requiring cleaning. Those would not be necessary for this project. The current uses include two bathrooms. A current use permit allowed for two bathrooms on-site for fifteen employees. There is some statements in the letter from the appellee as to the water usage demands of the clients they have, which are less than a typical hospital. And under the current building code, which this project will comply with, for a new project, requires water conservation fixtures and landscaping in addition to anything that exists out there right now. So there should be less water use for this facility than what was used by the previous use permit and what was used by the building, as it will be updated to current code. And with that, that completes staff's report, and we are ready to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Is there any presentation by the appellee? That would be, Mr. Gonzalez, Arnolfo Gonzalez, you asked to speak to us, and so this is your opportunity.
My name's Arnold, Arnold, it's probably easier for everybody. My wife and I chose this, this location specifically for, that it was on a corner, and at the demand of a lot of our existing families and residents at our other community in Visalia, that they want some, something out in the country, they couldn't find what we do anywhere in Tulare County. So that's why we chose this, this property. As far as the traffic goes, as Aaron pointed out, that it's going to be significantly less, we estimate ten to twelve employees, and we're spreading that out over twenty-four-hour period, three to four in the morning, two in the afternoon, and two to graveyard. So even our, with visitors coming and going, or CNAs or other hospice caregivers and stuff like that, our impact to the neighborhood's going to be way less than what was there before. We're not having heavy equipment come in, we're not, as a matter of fact, half the property on the back, we're converting it to parking for staff, that way there's absolutely no parking in the front, the roundabout. That way, it keeps the, plenty of space for handicap and transport vehicles and visitors to park on-site. So even though everybody has a right to park on the street, we're still not going to impact the neighborhood. One of the things that I used to do in Southern California was commercial landscaping in the inland empire. One of my specialties was getting shopping centers, malls, hotels, and do water reduction, and my average in that was twenty-five to forty percent water reduction, just changing fixtures, adjusting timers and things like that. I was already proactively in that process before we came here, so I, existing vegetation is... proactively in that process before we came here. So existing vegetation is drought tolerant, and any new vegetation will be drought tolerant. As far as the grass, it's crabgrass. It's drought tolerant. I can stop watering it for a month at a time, and it'll come right back. So I'm already being proactive on that. I don't think we're going to use more water than what was there before. I can tell you that if we, from water usage now to what we're going to be at, we're going to be in the neighborhood about forty percent less water usage. We do have our own well. All the fixtures inside the house, whether required or not, we're already thinking of using low-flow water fixtures. For example, the toilets will be the ones that flush once if it's just urine, flush two gallons if it's number two, right? So I'm already thinking of that, not because I'm asked to, but we're, my wife and I, we also have a pistachio orchard. We have livestock. We have a cattle ranch. So water conservation is something that we've already been doing for a while, and we're mindful of the environment and where we're at. We're in Central Valley, and everybody drop counts. Unfortunately, my wife cannot be here. She is in London. She's a presenter in international neurological conference, and she's presenting on dementia and Alzheimer's and things like that. That's kind of our specialty. I think that as far as the code, I have no clue on that. I'll leave that up to him. He's, you guys know what's going on as far as the code. But the other two items, I can honestly tell you that it's going to be very minimal compared to what the use was there before. I mean, even at our peak events, we'll have maybe fifty people coming to visit for Mother's Day, Thanksgiving, holidays, events like that. They're only a few times a year. As far as noise, we play classical music in our events, maybe a couple acoustic instruments. And that's it. And we have courtyard. We're set up for everything. The location's perfect. We're in a corner so that we don't bother the neighborhood. So staff, staff are going to be instructed to come off Prosperity, not to go through the neighborhood. I really, I mean, can't ask them that. Make it a rule. It's public streets. But we're really not going to impact the neighborhood.
Any questions? Thank you. All right. At this time, that's the appellate's presentation. So again, you don't have to come at one time. If you want to come up individually, please give us your name. Now, these are the appellants. We will, if you're not here as an appellant, I know there are a number of you, if you're here as a person, as a public member who wants to testify, you will have an opportunity to do that. But first would be the actual appellants that have brought this action. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
And please give us your name and address.
To the chair, Christine Hurd was the actual appellant. I don't know if you're making public comment.
But, Aaron, I think he might be a named.
You see, there's several, there are several peoples on the names. So it wasn't, Christine starts the list, and then it goes on. So if you are one of the appellants, sir, please go ahead.
Okay. My name's Brett Winiger, and my address is three three two six East Prosperity. Let me put my glasses on. Good morning. I have a few concerns, and some of them were addressed in the planning commission when we met with them. The first is, I'm concerned about the septic system overload in our area. When you add eighteen beds, plus staff, plus visitors, you probably have more total people than most of the single-family homes in this area combined. Second is my water, the issue with water, very much the same as the septic issue. More people, more water consumption. More of us have had to put in new wells in the last couple of years at a cost of twenty to thirty thousand. And another issue I have is I happen to have walnut trees, as does my neighbor. And we farm those trees. And I realize we have the right to farm. But the problem we could very easily run into is if someone gets, decides, either the gentleman here, his wife, the magnolia group, decide to sue us over something, dust, noise, chemical use, burning, et cetera, we can only farm if we have or want to spend the money to fight these individuals in court. If we truly have the right to farm, as we have for the last thirty years on this property, we shouldn't be subject to this type of possible legal action. As we have a neighbor right now, Ron Machado, who has spent in excess of twenty-two thousand dollars on attorney fees for his neighbor, okay, and he's been farming this current location thirty-five to forty years. So I don't know that I have forty thousand dollars or thirty thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars to fight someone that says this. And I had another instance when someone moved into my area in Fortin, the planning commission. They subdivided an area that was supposed to be a hundred thousand square feet. They cut it in half, which they weren't supposed to do. They're going to spend fifty thousand dollars on the home they moved in there. It's solid weeds. It has been weeds for the last twenty-five years. So I get to look at that every day when it was approved. Although they said, we're going to do this and this and this, there was nothing in writing. There's nothing that said they were going to do that. So I guess my concern is if they're going to go ahead with this project, and you guys approve it, I would like to see something in writing so they can't do certain things. This happened to me in the past. Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Justin Curdie. Lived on Lewis Lane. My address is seventeen ten Lewis Lane. Lived on there for about the last nine, coming upon ten years. Very quiet community. It's zoned for rural residential. There's agriculture around us. I know that they've spoke that there could be adjustments and whatnot to the zoning for this facility yet. And as alluded to earlier, you know, with water and sewer and whatnot, this is going to create a big impact in our area. Most of us have had to drop wells, you know, a good hundred, twenty, hundred and forty foot down. The opposition has spoke that there's going to be so many staff and eighteen beds and whatnot, and that the previous tenant or owners of the property had more employees and whatnot. But what you got to keep in mind is they were a paving crew. They came in, they got their equipment, and they left. They weren't there all day. They weren't utilizing electricity and water and so on and so forth, all the resources in that area, as this new proposed facility is going to be doing. I'm sorry, I just don't agree with this type of industry or involvement in our community, not in that area. If it was more of a commercialized area, more of a residential area in town, fine. Now, being out in the country, we've all chose to acquire homes out in that area to be away from all that stuff, because we like our nice, quiet country area. And that's all I have to say. Hope you take that under consideration.
Morning.
Good morning. My name is Bill Westbrook. I live at thirty-three thirty East Prosperity. I've lived there now for thirty years, almost. I started with nothing and worked very hard and achieved a home that, it's not the Taj Mahal, but it's something that's very comfortable for my wife and I. And thinking that we were going to have a home for as long as we needed it, we signed that deed stipifying, anyway, pardon me. I was under the impression that things were going to be the same always, because I had to sign a document agreeing not to build something else on that property. And that's the way it is with everyone that's in that area. And so I've lived there all these years, and everything's been great. One day, I got a letter from the planning commission. Up until that time, I was not aware of what was going on in the street over that joins me. I'm back-to-back to this property that these people want to build this rest home. And coming to the planning commission, I thought we had a voice, but evidently, it was a foregone conclusion. This had already been approved. I hope you'll forgive me. I may be asking you something very dumb, but I want you to understand. I've had to work all my life, and I've spent most of my time in the field. And so I don't know all the things that go on in county government. But I heard you, Mr. Chairman, a moment ago, say that, remember, you're under oath. I was just curious. It just came into my mind at the moment ago when you read that. Do you remember that you're under oath also? Is that true? Do you take an oath when you come into office? I don't know anything about county government, but I'm assuming that you do. You have an oath. Would you help me? What kind of oath do you have? Do you swear that you're going to uphold the county government? You're going to take care of the people and properties in the county? Could you tell me?
Real quickly, I could just tell you, this is not normally a process where we engage in conversation, but we take an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That is our oath.
Thank you. I'm just curious. I'm not trying to be a smart aleck. I don't want to anger anyone. I just am curious. So my deed says that this is for family residence. This project is not going to be a family residence. It's a business. The people who own it are not going to live there. It's not a residence for them. So I'd like to ask you, if this was going next door to you, and you didn't know it, people start tearing things out of a house, and you think they're just remodeling. Then you find out what's going on, I did at the planning commission, and then I begin to get disturbed. And then I find out after the meeting, I'm accused of being a racist. I didn't even know who was doing it. The name, the person, nothing. So you understand that I'm just a little bit worked up. You would be too, I think. And so I, I don't know. I sure hope that you haven't got a preconceived idea of how this is going to turn out. It would be discouraging to think that the people around don't make any difference. If someone, they just come in next door to you and start doing all this, and then you find out that it's already a done deal, that's discouraging. So I wish you to think about it. I would appreciate it, and thank you for the opportunity.
My name's Darrell Ward, and I live at three three two six East Prosperity. I'm behind the project. My concern is, we get the notice, but I can't find out if there were building permits. There's construction been going on. There's demolition been going on. Have permits been issued? If they have, why were they issued before the use permits were approved? I spent twenty-five years in government. I understand the process and the approval process. And when I got, went to get a permit at my house, they told me under no circumstances could I start anything until that permit was approved. And that was like three and four months for them to approve a simple little exterior garage. And then you go over and you find out they haven't got the use permits. I don't know, because nobody will tell me, whether they have building permits where they're permitted to do demolition, which I believe you required for that size project, architectural drawings, and et cetera. So, you know, I just don't understand. And then you have not one person in the entire neighborhood that supports this, but somebody else. It's okay. One person can control everything. And I didn't think that's the way our democracy was. And I don't think that's what I spent twenty-five years in the military to defend. Thank you, gentlemen,
Good morning.
My name is Becky Pichot. I'm at fourteen twenty-four Lewis Lane. I've lived there about sixteen years, had the property about that amount of time as well. Again, like everyone else, we purchased it for the reason that everyone else has in that area, the nice, quiet country living, which is residential, and you have neighbors, but they're not right on top of you, so we enjoy that. My concerns are to do with the noise. I have several concerns, but being a twenty-four-hour facility, shift employees around the clock, coming and going, it's not residential in character doing that. I mean, you may have someone that had to leave in the middle of the night, you know, for whatever their reason. But with employees coming and going, that's going to cause disturbance. We all have dogs in that neighborhood, because we have large properties. So several of us have horses, dogs, you know, other animals. With that coming and going, it will cause ruckus with the dogs. So we've got barking, which will wake up the residents, wake up the residents that will be living there, the people that are going to be there for the purpose. It's not a good situation. Food delivery trucks, to feed that many residents, they're potentially going to be bringing in food delivery trucks. How often a week? I don't know. I couldn't tell you that. But those food trucks will be coming and going. They'll have lift gates that'll be noisy. They'll have hand trucks rolling things in. It's a business. It's not a residential situation where that's a once-in-a-blue-moon thing. So that again creates additional noise to our quiet neighborhood. And how about emergency vehicles? We're a lot of times dealing with very sick people, and emergency vehicles need to do their job. I understand that. But when you have eighteen beds there and residents in and out of there, potentially, emergency vehicles can be called there on a regular basis, for all we know. Again, what hours of the night? Could be in the middle of the night. Lights, maybe not sirens, but maybe sirens. What's going to happen with the dogs? You know, they hear sirens, they're going to just go, go, go. And just the lights, the noise, the disturbance in general. And also the trash. For a facility that size, with that many residents and employees coming and going, they're going to need a pretty large-sized trash dumpster, I would assume, a commercial size, because it's not a resident. It's commercial. So most of, most neighbors in our neighborhood have theirs hidden from the view. We do have a couple small one-yarders, but this will not be a one-yard. I can tell you it won't fit for what use that they're going to be doing. Again, that is not in the character of a residential situation. So therefore, it's very obvious that this is a business. It's a commercial business. I don't care what size they want to say, but it's going to disrupt the environment of our neighborhood. I don't appreciate the harassment that we have been treated by Mrs. Gonzalez. She has visited several of us in the neighborhood. After the appeal was submitted, I was visited on the first of June, and she came up and introduced herself. I didn't recognize her right off the bat, because I had only seen her at the planning commission. And she proceeded to tell me that, in her words, "Those who throw stones will get them right back." In her words, "What goes around comes around. You'll wait and see what happens." And the threatening of discrimination, she accused me of discriminating against old people, that they don't belong in a neighborhood like that. I never said that to the planning commission. That was not what I said. And the racism, that we are hiding behind our appeal reasons, and she accused the entire neighborhood to do this, "We're hiding behind the appeal reasons to not want them there because they are Mexican," her words. I said, "That's ridiculous. Has nothing to do with it." So she has threatened an attorney to sue us for discrimination and racism, and I don't appreciate that. I mean, we're just trying to do what is I mean, we're just trying to do what is best for our neighborhood that we have all lived there and invested a lot of money and a lot of time in. And they're coming in here and threatening us after the appeal comes in, which cannot be appropriate. I don't appreciate that. I don't appreciate. What kind of neighbors are they going to be if that's what they do after an appeal is set? Well, we're just coming to speak our mind about what we do not feel is appropriate in our neighborhood. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Wanda Carpenter. And I'm the oldest one that's lived out there on that street. Everybody else has left me. My husband and I built, bought the two and a third acres to help raise our son on a farm. And, uh, we've enjoyed it. We have pecans, we have pomelos, and we have mandarins. And, uh, we've had a hard time with agricultural people. Every time we turn around, somebody comes out and tells us, "We gotta spray this and we can't do that and we can't do this." So we try to comply with them. But then when somebody comes and they don't tell us anything about it, it's sort of like a thief in the night. And you go down and you go to the stop sign and you see your friends move out. And then you see these other people move in. And then pretty soon you see building hammering and everything going on. And you see the property that they had before when they bought it has turned into a disaster area. I mean, there's weeds everywhere. And I'm a very picky person about weeds. And the, the whole place makes it just look like a junkyard on the corner. I don't care what they say. They might be going to fix it up, but they haven't. And I've never been visited by anybody, but I was waiting for it. But, uh, you know, if you have somebody like that and you're thinking about, I've worked in a nursing facility. And I know what goes on. And I know the noise that goes on. And when you have, I'm 76 years old. And when you go to bed at night and you're woke up in the middle of the night with sirens going on and everything else like that, you automatically wake up and think, "Well, this is my, me, my neighbor." And you get up and you, you're concerned. But when you get a little bit older, it's a little bit harder on your heart. But anyway, these people, I feel sorry for them. They were misled by a realtor that just wanted to make some money, I think. But, um, these people don't belong on this corner because it's a very hazardous corner. Because you've got field workers in Blueberries. They park there on the street. They're on both sides of the street. You know, these people here, they're talking about cars coming in and out and they're not going to use Lewis Lane. They're going to have to use Lewis Lane to get in and out. Because when you've got field workers out there, there's, you know, and they're going to Sundale. There's traffic. I mean, there's gobs of traffic. This guy might think there's not that much traffic, but he doesn't live out there. You know? And when people come and go, you know, you, you find a little trash here and there. But with these people coming in and out like they are and with as big as trash as they're going to have, it's pitiful. But like everybody said, we've had to put in new wells, you know? And we all help out. When one person had their well put in, we supplemented our well for theirs till they got their well put in. And that's the way the family works. Our neighborhood is a family. And we work together. And we don't want somebody sneaking in trying to disrupt it. So if you want them to live next door to you, you can have them.
I'll take them.
Okay? I'll be more than happy to move them for you. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Christine Hurd. I live at 1425 Lewis Lane, right next door to the, um, proposed project. Wanted to say a couple of things in regards to the existing use permit that allows for 50 vehicles and 15 employees and 44 trips per day. The type of use that it was, was a contractor storage yard. And that use was not 24-hour. The employees would come to work and pick up their vehicles and then leave for the day as Justin Curdie had mentioned. They did not have back and forth traffic all, all day long. There were not 50 vehicles coming and going all day. It may have allowed for that many, but they did not have that many on the property. And I, I don't know exactly how many vehicles they had on the property, but not all of their vehicles were coming and going all day. They have, you know, specialty vehicles because it was a paving company and so some vehicles were, were used some days and some were used other days. I would probably estimate that there was less than 10 vehicles that were dispatched daily. The staff member had said that this is not going to be a much more intensive use than the contractor storage facility, which I don't agree with that. I believe that it is a much more intensive use, being a 24-hour care facility with as many people as they're proposing coming and going all day. In regards to the water usage, they're, they're stating, um, that for the 18 residents and 12 employees, they're going to use less water when in reality, there was only maybe two employees that were on-site during the day, the husband and wife that owned the business. The other employees were not there and they did not have staff members that were in the office. In regards to the permits, they purchased the property in mid-2017 and have just now requested the, the required permits. And I believe, I heard that it was because somebody had brought it to the attention of the county, but I'm not positive on that because I have not corroborated that with anyone in the neighborhood. And like I said, I've lived there for nine years. During that time, that contractor storage yard was there and I have firsthand knowledge of, of that and the uses that were, um, of the property. Additional information on the traffic, um, besides the 18 residents and the 12 full-time staff and administrative personnel, how many more vehicles are going to be coming in per day to pick up the residents for doctor's appointments, rehab appointments, and that sort of thing? To me, that's probably going to equal, I'm going to have, you know, 50-plus vehicles circulating in our neighborhood every day. And it is a small street. There's only 17 houses in our lot or in our subdivision. It's, it's not a regular residential area because the lots are at least 2.1 to 2.4 acres for each lot. We also have CCNRs for our subdivision. And I have copies of that for, um, to submit. The CCNRs specifically state that all lots are to be used for residential use only. So having a 24-hour care facility is not residential in nature or character. There are no permanent residents that will be living there. The owners of the property will not be living there. So that is not considered residential any longer. The CCNRs also specifically state that no building shall be altered on any lot until the construction plans have been approved by the Architectural Control Committee. As the harmony of, as to the harmony of external design, the Architectural Control Committee consists of the members of the subdivision. We have not been made privy to any of the building plans until now and we still do not have, not received anything on the building plans. The CCNRs also state that no sign of any kind shall be displayed to the public view on any lot except for one sign of not more than eight square feet advertising the property for sale or rent or advertising for the sale of produce of the property, which was previously denied by the property owners as Wanda had said that the county would not allow her to post signs for, to sell her fruit that's on her property, which is allowable use. So the proposed three-foot monument with downlighting is inconsistent with residential use and not allowed according to our CCNRs. And when I purchased my home, I relied on those CCNRs to maintain the character and integrity of my home and the neighborhood. And now you, the county, are not, are interfering with my contractual rights through those CCNRs with the developer of the neighborhood. And lastly, I want to speak on the character of the property owner. As a couple of residents have already stated, Ms. Gonzalez did show up at my property. I was the first one that she came to on May 22nd. It was the day after the appealed was, appeal was filed. She had, I'm assuming she had a copy of it because she knew everyone's names that were on there. And I have a narrative that I have typed up as to the conversation that happened between us. And she basically said, right out of the gate, said that we were opposing the project because that they were Mexican and then they had an accent. She accused us of racial discrimination. She said she had an email from someone, although she would not tell me who the email was from, that stated that we had, that somebody had heard us say that. And those, those are not facts. That was never said. It was never brought up. It's never been an issue. Like another one of our neighbors had said, "Our neighborhood is comprised of all different ethnicities and races." And we, it, it's just not a founded thing, that she had said. In addition to that, um, I have a, a letter and copies of text messages from Ms. Gonzalez to my neighbor Laura Cardoza, who Sean and Laura Cardoza wished to not show up today because of retaliation. I have a, a letter stating that fact. Ms. Gonzalez not only showed up at their house and complained or accused them of the same things. She tried to intimidate by saying she knew the Visalia mayor, even though she couldn't state why she was saying that. Laura contacted the Visalia mayor and he said that he's never heard of her. So it was, it was complete intimidation and harassment on her part. She also went as far as to contact her husband Sean Cardoza's employer, the lead broker, he's a real estate agent, and threatened sending a letter to the newspaper saying that they're liars and that they're racist. So I would like to submit all of that information as well as copies of the CCNRs. So again, I just wanted to reiterate that we are opposing this project. And, um, based on all of the facts that have been presented today, I really hope and wish that you would give some thought to what everybody is speaking about and just the way that we have been treated as a whole in our neighborhood over this. You know, it's our, it's our right to come to these meetings and present and to talk and to appeal. And, you know, all of those are given rights to us. And for somebody to come to our house and to, to solicit the other neighbors and call us racist and accuse us of saying things that we did not say just goes to prove the character of the type of people that would be moving into our neighborhood or that would be the property owners. And it, it makes you think about what would happen in the future if they didn't like something that you did or, you know, I, I just, I don't know. I don't know the lengths that they would go to. Thank you for your time.
Morning.
Morning. My name's Nathan Larda. I'm at 3326 East Prosperity, number D. I would have to say I'm the newest person in the neighborhood. I've been there a year. And in fact, I personally looked at the property that was for sale and knew the, the previous owner. The house, for one, used to be immaculate. That guy took care of it. From the way it looks now, it looks pretty rundown. A lot of my concerns are with the elderly people being there and the farming that's going, going around with the trees and stuff. And I personally have horses, beef cows, and zone for farming over there too. All that dust that is generated from, from my borders and me and my kids riding horses or motorcycles or even farming, disking, all that stuff, it, the wind blows it, pushes it right over that place. So I'm, I'm very concerned that, you know, when it comes to the season, that that is going to be an issue that is going to be brought up from the people. And like everyone's been saying, the place is residential, zoned, and farming's zoned. It should stay that way. I do know that the previous owner, there was only two people that lived there. They were an elderly couple. As far as vehicles and stuff going in, he had some bigger equipment. But with everything that he owned parked in his yard was eight pieces of equipment, as you could tell from the pictures that were up there. There was nowhere near 50. If he had a job, they left. Then that equipment would be gone for a month at a time, two weeks, whatever it was for, for that. So there was no really steady people coming in and out. Prosperity is pretty, pretty dangerous when it comes to mornings and evenings due to Sundale School. It is really bad. I've almost, almost got hit several times. Now, with the ambulances and stuff coming in at night, my dogs go nuts just listening to them from town. They howl, they do everything. My horses get upset. They, they spook them. You know, the stuff's loud. Whatever the ambulances have in their sirens, animals don't like them. I really am worried about having people out there on horses and just have an ambulance show up versus to where my six-year-old daughter has her own horse and rides herself to where, you know, if an ambulance just pops up and I'm not able to get there in time to have her thrown off in the ground, hurt, you know, there's, there's a lot of possibilities that, that could end up happening. I just didn't spend all that money for that property this last year to see it turned in, you know, to something else. It's a family community, as you guys can tell. We all know each other. We all help each other. And we don't need someone with that mentality of that lady coming into the, the neighborhood and disrupting us. I thank you guys for your time and I hope you guys make a good decision. Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning. I'm Betty Ward. I live at 3326 East Prosperity. I don't have a script. I didn't do a fancy pub overhead. We bought our home 22 years ago when my husband retired from the military. It's nice and quiet. I see the planning commission ripping our rural neighborhoods apart. Going into the planning commission meeting, it was a done deal. And we just wasted our breath and time. I was, I was appalled to think that my tax dollars pay these people. I, I mean, appalled. And I, I apologize. I, I just was. This is a rural neighborhood. I understand that we do need healthcare facilities and we need them desperately and they need to be affordable here in Tulare County. However, an 18-bed facility doesn't need to be in a rural residential neighborhood. That doesn't even make common sense to me. Six beds, the residents are, can get out. I can kind of understand that. 18 with two staff? I can't understand that. His residents want to be in the country. Well, you have houses around you. Two-and-a-half acre lots aren't that big. And by the way, mine's only less than an acre and a quarter because when we bought ours, the planning commission divided it. Once they get this variance, to put it quite plainly, we're screwed. Because they can do anything they want and turn it into anything they want within that variance. Any promises that are made are down the drain. I would like to see, not only for our community, but for other rural communities, the integrity of these communities kept. There are places where these facilities should be. And I'm not saying not next door to me. I'm saying an eighteen-bed one not next door to me. And I don't care if my father was in there. Number one, I wouldn't have wanted him next door to me anyway, even on his own two-and-a-half acres, but you know. But, loved him to death, but you know. This just isn't, it, it just isn't right. It doesn't feel good. It doesn't feel right. What kind of facility is it? We don't know. We do know there's going to be eighteen beds there. Are these people going to be wandering the neighborhood? There's two bathrooms, as the planning commission stated. Two staff bathrooms. What are, what are these eighteen people going to use? They're going to have family Sundays. Okay, you have eighteen residents. I don't know. They might have a small family like mine or a humongous one like my neighbor. I don't know. It just doesn't feel right. And I don't think in prayers and thoughts, it just doesn't sit well with me to do this to those people, stick them out there where there's no bus service or anything else, or to all of my neighbors. It's just not right and it's not the right decision. And I'm really, really upset with our planning commission. And I think they need a little more oversight.
Look, you're wrapping it up here.
Thank you for your patience. I am wrapping it up. My name is Nancy Jenner. I'm with the law firm McCormick, Cabot, Jenner and Lou. I have reviewed the categorical exemption that staff relied on that pertains to existing facilities. That exemption does not apply because this use is not the same or less. And let me read you the language of that very exception. Class one consists of the operation, repair, maintenance, et cetera, et cetera, involving negligible or no expansion of use beyond that existing at the time the lead agency's determination. Categorical exemptions are construed narrowly and they may not be broadened. Amador versus Eldorado Water, seventy-six, count at fourth, nine thirty-one. This is an expansion because it's going from a, a normal storage facility with minimal in-and-out traffic to a twenty-four-hour facility. Changes in staff, deliveries of goods, visitors, caregivers. This is not the same use. This is an increase of use. So the categorical exemption does not apply requiring at a minimum an initial study. There was testimony pertaining to Ms. Gonzalez making the rounds of the neighborhood and threatening them with racial discrimination lawsuits. Affordable Housing Development Corporation versus City of Fresno. Four thirty-three Fed Third, eleven eighty-two, a case near and dear to my heart because I was one of the trial lawyers. The Ninth Circuit, in a published decision, stated that the Fair Housing Act is not trumped by the First Amendment. The neighbors have been threatened for the purpose of chilling their free speech rights, which subjects Gonzalez to potential liability. The county is immune and protected as well. This is the precise issue that the Affordable Housing Development Corporation lawsuit was about. The developer sued the City of Fresno over an apartment complex and the developer claimed it was denied because they were discriminating against families with children and race. After a four-week jury trial, in one hour of deliberation, the jury concluded that they had not discriminated. But the Ninth Circuit also reiterated it shouldn't have gone to trial. It should have been thrown out on summary judgment as to the citizens. Because the citizens were named individually, just like Ms. Gonzalez threatened to do here. Ultimately, the district court awarded a half a million dollars in attorney's fees for the citizens' lawyers' bills because that's what it costs. The case went on for five years. So Ms. Gonzalez should take heed before making any more comments to the neighbors. All that is required to trigger an EIR is a fair argument. Berkeley versus Hillside Reservation Preservation versus City of Berkeley, sixty, count fourth, ten eighty-six. The citizens in the neighborhood have raised a fair argument that this is going to impact their neighborhood in a significant way. So in my mind, you have a few choices. Number one is grant the appeal and deny the permit entirely. Grant the appeal and refer it back to staff for an initial study. Or three, grant the appeal and limit the occupancy to six residents pursuant to Health and Safety Code Section one-five-six-nine-point-eight-five that provides that a care facility with six or less residents is deemed residential. Also, limiting the shift changes to two times a day. Anything other conditions that the county could impose that make this less intrusive and less of an impact on the neighborhood. And with that, I thank you.
That concludes the appellant's presentation. So now we have the staff and the appellate's rebuttal.
Through the chair, Aaron Bach, Chief Planner, Tulare County Resource Management Agency. In regards to all the testimony you heard today, that was very similar as to what we heard in front of the planning commission. So there, there wasn't too many differences. I think we did answer most of the SEQA questions in regards to the baseline standards that were there previously, or what was allowed as the baseline standards versus what this project entails. So as far as SEQA is concerned, staff has thought that we met all the standards, despite what council says otherwise. There are other uses out there that are commercial in nature as to businesses that do, are outside the rural residential zoning. So that was nothing new. The applicant has proceeded at risk through the building permit process, full well knowing that if this board decides that he cannot move forward with a full eighteen-bed facility, that he would be reduced to, to six beds, that he, he was to move forward at risk. So whether he proceeds with this project, whether it's six beds or eighteen beds, that would be up to him. But he did sign a letter to that effect and we do have that on record. In regards to some of the other impacts to the neighborhood, traffic, we, we did look at under SEQA. As far as the stuff that's more subjective, there are conditions in the permit that do lessen those impacts. And those are obviously subject to whatever the board may want to add as conditions. One thing the applicant did propose was to actually use Lewis more than Prosperity. If Prosperity's traffic would be of greater concern, but it sounds it's of equal to concern to the community, so I don't know if that appeases them.
Can you repeat that?
The, the, one thing the applicant did suggest recently was that he would come in off of Lewis onto his property site. And as far as the access to the entryway and all the vehicles more related to the actual living and care facility would come off of Prosperity. So, and he would do exit only on Prosperity. So that was something he did offer recently. If that would solve some of these, these issues, that, that's been proposed. But we did also, at the planning commission, condition the project so it would have quarterly reviews. And I think we're allowed to do that because they are above the six-home standard. We would not be allowed to do that if it was at, at six homes. So the conditions add a bit more teeth to what we're doing today than what is necessarily stated. Without the conditions, they will be treated as a residential property. And all these concerns these folks have are, are just going to be there without conditions. So the conditions of the project allow the right to farm, allow everything else that our standard use permits require. So those are in addition to standard residential development.
Karen, can you speak to, there was a question raised about the septic system, existing septic system.
There, there's two septic systems on site. We did state in the use permit itself, it would also be subject to LAMP, our local agency management program. So the septic, as far as what was allowed before, and that's why I also stated as far as water, what was allowed before under the existing building permits is not true today. So he's going to have to go through the full LAMP process to improve the, the capacity of that. And we discussed that through the project review committee as well. So, but I did want to talk to CCNRs as the county does not enforce those issues. We, we do not, we, we do discuss those. We suggest sometimes how they can meet some of the requirements of CCNRs through conditions, but we, we do not enforce conditions.
And what about signage? Because along with that CCNR discussion, there was signage questions.
As Mrs. Hurd stated, there was a condition that they'd have a three-foot monument sign. That's all that would be allowed onsite and to be downlit, not uplit, so that the lighting would only be downwards. And that was a condition imposed at the, the planning commission. We do allow monument signs for businesses with our use permits. So I don't understand quite why she was not permitted a fruit stand signed historically. But we, we do allow that under our, our zoning code. But like I said, there are other businesses in the neighborhood, so this would not be the first time a business operates out there.
You have other questions?
For Mr. Gonzalez?
Oh, Mr. Gonzalez gets a chance to speak, but I, I'll let him speak first.
Okay, that's fine.
Gonzalez.
Thank you. As far as, I got two pages, so we're going to have to go down the list. The septic, we are actually getting an engineering company out of Exeter to come out. They already did the coring and the percolating tests and stuff. They will be coming back with a design to, to submit for, for plans on that, for permitting, actually. We did a go over, I went over with that representative from that company. And we're going to split part of the output from the house to that other septic system. And the way he put it, based on what you have already, it's going to be very minimal. You could actually take everything to the existing, but because it was brought up, we, we're just going to go ahead and put in additional septic to make sure that we have plenty of capacity for whatever needs might, might be in there. As far as the water, again, I know it's a hot topic for everybody, not just in here, but outside. I, I have drip irrigation on, on my pistachios. I don't flood irrigate. My neighbor flood irrigates. If that was really an issue, we'd switch over. So I don't see that as an issue. Again, I'm very mindful of the location. We're in Central Valley and every drop counts. So I'm already, I have to emphasize again, I was already in the works of revamping the entire irrigation system to do low flow, put drippers and sprayers, put the, the, those hoses that just sweat in flower beds and stuff like that to make sure that we don't consume a lot of water. The traffic impact, as he had mentioned before, the previous owner did run a business out of there. He also, nobody's mentioned that he also had clients come to the house because they ran an office out of there. So he did have an impact on the neighborhood. He had traffic impact, whether it's, it's the employees coming and going. But the traffic that was generated with him was a lot, a lot more than what I'm going to be generating because of the type of equipment coming and going. Yeah, the residents have a right to have family night or whenever, they, they have a right to have visitors whenever. Somebody earlier said that, that nobody mentioned that the seniors don't belong in the neighborhood. Just right now, more than two times, they've verbalized that the seniors don't belong in the neighborhood. So I'm asking you, what kind of a county are we, where we segregate our elderly just because they're old? Does that mean that they're worthless and can't contribute anything else to our community when they contributed so much? Most of our, our residents currently at our other community are veterans, living legends, farmers, people that work their, excuse the language, but they work their ass off to do what, get what they want and what they have. And I have a high respect for that. I have a high respect for our military. So we try to do as much as we can to honor and respect them in providing the quality of care that they deserve. One of the things that makes, stands us out from everybody else out there is that we don't relocate residents. It's not inventory. Once a resident comes to us, it's home all the way to the end of, of the road. And we take great pride in that. We take great pride in having, providing the best environment that we can, whether it's indoors and outdoors. No, our residents will not be going through the neighborhood unattended, but if they want to take a walk, they have a right to. But that's why we have, we picked this location because it provides ample space for them to take a walk onsite. But let me tell you, if anybody, even at our community right now, says, I want to go outside the gates, I'd be happy to walk with them anytime. If it's truly home, they have a right to do what they want twenty-four-seven. They want to sleep on the floor, they can sleep on the floor. It's home. So as far as the noise issue, ambulances, last time we were here, I stated that our other community, we, we're, we have a good relationship with our first responders and we tell them, come without sirens. And they show up without sirens. Not because I don't like the sound, because our other community is right smack in the middle of apartment complexes, residential neighborhood, and we respect that. Nobody ever asked us to do that. We were just doing it because we're mindful of our neighbors. And I'm sure with this location, there might be a location where one of our staff calls out for emergency services and, and they don't request that. But for the most part, we request that all the time and we've never had any issues. We never had them deny that. That's never been an issue. And not with paramedics or fire department or police department, we've never had any, anybody say, no, we can't do that. Trash dumpster. I actually have a smaller dumpster right now than with the previous owner had. At another location for forty-eight beds, which we actually got approved to do fifty, fifty-six residents now, yesterday, we have a three-yard dumpster. And that's plenty, supplies the need for the entire community. We don't have a big roll-off. We don't have big, big use of the trash. Again, we're mindful of our environment. We recycle what we can. And the trash that goes in there are incontinence supplies. We don't generate a lot of waste. So, but because, because of the house that we bought and the neighborhood, I was already planning as soon as we move along a little bit more because we had to, yes, the house looks horrible right now. It's boarded up. Their, their grass is not cut on a regular basis because we're, we're on hold. on hold. But as soon as we move forward again, I'm putting a trash enclosure. I don't want to see the trash can. A lot of my neighbors have their dumpster out in the front. Doesn't bother me, but I'm putting a trash enclosure in because I want to put animals out and because I want it to look good. Um, somebody said they worked at a nursing home and they know the chaos and the noise and everything. We're not a nursing home. We're an assisted living community. We hate, I hate nursing homes and it's completely the opposite of what we do. We do person-centered care. Our care is based on the needs of every individual, not the census. So our care is personalized and we genuinely care about every resident that we have. We have families here today that would speak on that. Um, so there's a clear distinction on that and I want to make sure that everybody understands the difference. Um, with us, it, it, you come, you come live there and it's, it's home, period. Mentation or physical changes, we don't relocate you, you don't get shipped off six months later. Um, Ms. Christine, she runs a business next door to her property. So I'm baffled why there's opposition on that because from what I understand and speaking with her husband too, um, they plan on expanding and I have no problem. If you could do everything from home and you want to expand, the only difference is that she lives there, which is great, but for what we're gonna do, we cannot live onsite. State requirement for our license. We, we cannot sleep under the same roof. Okay? So we're following the guidelines set out by the state on this. Um, our previous owner did have a sign out front, so I hope that really does not become an issue. I mean, I don't, I don't want a big neon sign, nothing. I have no problem something down lighting or small solar lights. I don't need it glowing at night, but it would be nice to have some, some decorative lighting on it. Uh, the dust concern, we are in a right to farm and I completely understand that. It would be like, I think you, the person that comes into a neighborhood like that, because you come into the neighborhood that has all these qualities, that's why you go there. And I understand my neighbors wanting to preserve that. So I would never jeopardize that. I'm not like, I grew up in Southern California where I saw the dairies pushed out because they're building homes and the people are complaining about the smell, flies and things like that because they live next door to a dairy. Well, the dairy was there first. They have a right. The orchards were there first. They have a right. I have no problem, nor will we have any issues with, uh, the farming and the ag issues going on around us. That's why we're there. As far as the dust on our end, we're being proactive and setting up a system inside the house that would help us clean the, the air for those sensitive with breathing issues. Um, we're not, unfortunately, my wife is not here, so we, we can't hear the full conversation. But it was really disheartening to see and, to find out that we, we went, went over to the, the house a few days after. We're trying to be proactive with our neighbors on, on this. First off, we didn't have to let anybody know what we're financially trying to do. We don't have to let our neighbors know. They're not paying our bills. But we went through the whole process to try to get here, to get our permits. But it was disheartening that some of the neighbors verbalized that, to tell you the truth, we're worried about your Mexican workers coming through our neighborhood. So snippets of the conversation, okay, but I'm not gonna go through the whole conversation, but you guys need to understand, that's where the underlying, uh, reason for those comments came. Um, we've always, my wife and I have always taken the role that God point us in the right direction. We'll do our own paving and then our own digging. We'll pave our own road. We're not asking anything for anybody. We're not asking for handouts. We're pushing this ourselves. We're just trying to do the right thing for the seniors in our community. Again, we have the utmost respect for that and that's why my wife is where she's at today, because she's working with, with people to trying to change the laws, trying to change the way things are done, not only abroad, but the medications and, and here locally and on how to do things better. Because how we've done things is completely inappropriate. And where we're going in the next few years with the, with the tsunami coming, I don't think any community out there is prepared because we attend events nation, with people nationwide and nobody, nobody is prepared for the issues that are coming. Yeah, the county, especially here, it's completely underserved with senior communities. And more and more, the trend nationwide is to put them in neighborhoods so that the residents can live a better life and actually have quality of life in their last years. So that's our intention. So I'm sorry that, that things went off the wrong way, but let me tell you, comments, racial comments or undertones are completely inappropriate. Our intention is, is to be good stewards of what we have and our neighborhood. And I really feel that we are going to be an asset to the neighborhood. We have our community in Visalia that, that speaks testament to what we do and the pride we take, pride in ownership. Thank you.
Uh, I think there was a question that you had.
Well, a couple of them. Um, where is your current facility?
It's, uh, it's called Magnolia Park Assisted Living.
One more time?
Magnolia Park Assisted Living.
Okay.
It's at 2950 East Douglas Avenue.
All right. And you say there's 54 beds there?
It's currently licensed for 48. Yesterday, we actually just got approved to increase capacity.
Okay. And in the new facility, how, how big is that new facility and how many rooms, like bedrooms?
The house is over 5,000 square feet.
Okay.
And it's gonna be, uh, nine bedrooms.
So you're, you're converting, you're inside converting rooms into bedrooms?
Yeah, we're actually not changing the footprint. One of the bedrooms, for example, the master bedroom in there was like 40 feet by 30. It was, it was huge.
Yeah.
So we just cut that in half, made two bedrooms.
And are you adding any restroom facilities? Cause two restrooms for 18 people and staff does seem small to me.
Yeah, that, that's not, uh, I think, okay, so the restroom.
Through the chair, that was, uh, in regards to the old use permit, the two bathrooms, so I'll let him speak to that.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we have five bathrooms. We're actually adding just one. There was four existing bathrooms in the house and we're adding one.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and we got rid of all the tubs. Everything's rolling showers. And again, residents will be assisted in the showers.
And typically from, from my work in healthcare, residents are not showered every day.
No.
Right?
They're not. They're on a shower schedule. Um, they do every other day, uh, obviously they have a choice if they want to shower whenever they, they can, but usually they like to get it, the structure, they like to get in their routine. It, it's, it's healthier for them, both physically and mentally to be on a routine.
And is there a particular type of patient, so to say, you know, Alzheimer's patients, specifically, um, a mix of types of, of patients or residents, I apologize, that will be residing there?
Uh, no, it, yes, there is specific type of residents that we're at, that we'll be looking for there, which would be assisted. Uh, dementia and Alzheimer's won't have to be somewhere else because that community will always stay assisted living only, but if they turn into hospice, we're not kicking them out. You, you die at home, you know, it's, it's end of, all the way to end of life. If there's dementia issues and stuff, even licensing will not allow us to mix them unless they're physically separated and stuff like that, and we're not gonna do that. It's just assisted living.
And how much assistance? I mean, is it like a, could people who are independent but just need to be in a type of facility with staff around, like a, say, a Quail Park or a Prestige? I'm, these are places that I'm aware of in Visalia that are, have some assisted living type.
Okay, so the difference with.
Services.
Yeah, the difference with us is that we do standby queuing or assisting 100%. In return, you have a healthier individual, less accidents and longer longevity, better quality of life. Um, our staff ratios are, should be around maybe one to every six or seven, uh, versus other communities is one to up to 30. So, so you would have to be completely independent and able to do everything for yourself. At the other communities, you might as well be in a hotel, it's cheaper. But with us, it's standby assist. We promote, do as much as you can, but for safety reasons, we will do standby assist.
Going ahead for now.
Questions? Just, uh, one quick question because it was brought up by staff. Um, Mr. Gonzalez, if, uh, the board were to restrict it to the by right use within the zoning of, of six residents, would you still move forward with the project or not?
That would not be viable. It would not be realistic when a house has that many rooms, had more, more than six bedrooms before we acquired it.
One, one question piggybacking off of that, is 18 the only amount? I mean, we've heard six and we've heard 18. Is there an in-between? Like is 12, uh, a sufficient amount to make it viable?
Not for that size of the property.
Okay.
Honestly, it, it has to be that. We don't pick, we don't want to increase capacity in the future either. It's gonna stay that, you know? And the majority of, now, keep in mind that 18 is if people, people share rooms. There's not 18 bedrooms.
Right.
So the issue that we have, even at our existing community, is that we may be licensed for 48, but we've never been at 48 in the last 13 years because we have an issue with us that everybody wants a private room with us. So I don't anticipate having 18 residents anytime soon. I anticipate most of the time, people wanting a private room with us. Because of the type of care, we will always have less than that.
All right. Okay, so at this point, uh, we, we're done with this part of it, so we go to the final portion of the appellants, final comments. Any comments from the final appellants? Okay. Okay, Mr. Mike.
There's also people here that want to speak on our behalf.
There'll be another opportunity.
Okay.
We're not done yet. This is, this is on the, the part of the parties speaking right now, so.
Christine Hurd, 1425 Lewis Lane. Um, in regards to, um, the traffic and him stating that they're not planning on using Prosperity, that they are planning on using Lewis Lane, that would actually impact our neighborhood even more.
That's what I thought. I think he said that was an option. And the, the plan right now is to be coming completely off of Prosperity. Uh, he, they were, they were suggesting different options if that would be less of a problem for the community.
Okay.
But that's my thought immediately was, that's gonna create more issues than the coming off Prosperity.
Okay. And, um, Mr. Bach had, um, made a comment about the county not enforcing CCNRs, but if the county approves this, how are we able to enforce our CCNRs?
CCNRs are, that's a private property right, so it doesn't engage the county. That if there's a violation of your CCNRs, then you would talk to your legal counsel about what your remedies would be, but that's, the county's not engaged in CCNRs enforcement.
Um, and as far as the businesses that are already there in the neighborhood, they are ran by the property owners. They are residents in the neighborhood. Um, and the, the businesses that are in the neighborhood are not 24-hour facilities. Um, they are contractor, storage yard type businesses where the employees, um, show up in the morning, they get in a vehicle and they leave. It's not in and out traffic, um, all day long. Um, and as far as the water usage, um, Mr. Gonzalez keeps bringing up about the landscaping, um, but that has not been something that we've brought up, that the water usage is because they're gonna have 30 people in that house using water on a daily basis and there was only two. So that's all I have for you now.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're gonna open up the public testimony portion of the meeting. So what we've had before with the parties speaking, this is the public hearing. At this time, we invite any member of the public who wishes to speak on this matter to do so. Please limit your comments to the relevant topic and to providing new information that has not already been discussed. Please state your name and address for the public record. Public comments may be limited and are limited to three minutes. So people who are not members of the, they were not, uh, appellants or proponents, but they're here as members of the public that want to speak to this matter are invited to come forward at this time. Come on up, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
Please give us your name and address.
My name is Dayton Kidderman, Dr. Dayton Kidderman. I'm a resident of Visalia at 2503 A East Goshen Avenue. And I'm here as, uh, one who's benefited by my father being a resident at Magnolia Park, uh, for two and a half years before he passed away. And, uh, several of the comments were, we don't know what's going to happen. Well, I can speak to what did happen with my father at Magnolia Park and I'm willing to answer any questions you have, but, uh, we had an opportunity to put my, place my father in any of the, uh, assisted living homes here in Visalia. And we chose Magnolia Park and it was probably the best decision we could make. The quality of care is beyond description. Uh, Esperanza Hansen Gonzalez has a knowledge of, uh, senior care needs that is exceptional. Um, I guess the bottom line of what I want to say is, this is the kind of facility and the kind of professionalism that Tulare County wants for senior care. Um, I'm glad I'm on this side of the podium and you guys are making the decision about this particular residence in Tulare County, but what I can say is that this is exceptional care. Uh, one example is my father loved to do gardening and he was a carpenter. And they actually provided a gardening area for my dad. They went and bought seeds. They let my dad have a shovel, uh, and they let him help build some raised gardens. Uh, it was, it was phenomenal. And, and, uh, one of the things that was so true is my dad, uh, progressed through dementia and finally passed away, had to go through hospice care. And it was good that he did not have to leave. That was his home. And he moved from one part of the facility that was mainly assisted care to one part that was dementia and then finally through hospice. And, uh, so I, I have no reason to be here except to express the fact that this kind of care is needed in, in Tulare County and it was exceptional and worth every penny we paid. What you do with Tulare, I don't, I, you know, I don't want to tell you about that, except you want more of these. You want more of Esperanza and her work. I don't know if you have any questions for me.
Okay, thank you very good. Thank you. Other members of the public? Good morning.
Losing my voice. My name's Jamie and Burrows.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
Jamie Burrows.
Thank you.
Uh, 230 Portola Avenue, Exeter. Um, I'm coming, um, again, I can't add a lot more than what he already said. Esperanza's taking care of both my mom and my dad and to have a facility like this, more of these is what our country needs. Um, I've known Esperanza for the last two years, we do, through business, um, but subsequently my father got hit by a car riding his bicycle without a helmet. Uh, he ended up being misdiagnosed. She was by his side the whole time. My father probably would have passed away without her care and concern. Um, her facilities are better than most of the neighbors' homes. You would never know. It's a commercial facility. It's a home, like everybody keeps saying. I think that neighbors that are upset, um, you know, when, when people get surprised at something new's coming into town, you know, it's gonna make your neighborhood better. It really will. And I hope you all understand that. And the, the way that they are very conscientious about the neighborhood, their patients, the community in general, I mean, she's, she's all, all the way in London speaking at a very, very important conference and she was, was this close to not going because of this meeting. So we need more people like her and we need more places like what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Danell Moriham and I'm, uh, the program director for Not For Profit, which is a local nonprofit organization, 501(c)(3). And we are in the area that, uh, her current facility serves. And I can attest to it after being familiar, knowing both Mr. Gonzalez and Ms. Gonzalez. I've known them for about eight to 10 years now and at no time have we ever had any problems such as noise or high traffic. There's more high traffic on Lover's Lane than there is going toward her facility. And we have had, uh, a good relationship with her, uh, facility and we have been in there and seen on a constant basis, the care level that they provide is, uh, far and above, uh, anybody's perception of what you could expect. In other words, it goes beyond. And we highly recommend her, uh, uh, facility to everybody that we deal with on a daily basis and we have, we're a multiple location organization. So we have already given high recommendations to our other associates in the, uh, San Jose, Northern Cal and Southern Cal area. So as, uh, what I've heard here today is completely opposite because we are a, uh, within, in the area of her facility and we have actually. area of her facility, and we have actually seen when the, the emergency vehicles, there's no siren, it's lights only. And they have, it seems like they do this specifically for them, even though there is a high school and community education center down. I have heard when that siren is running for there, but for their facility, no, we have never been interrupted by it nor impeded by it. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Somebody else coming up, I believe? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Rhonda Lisbon, and I live at 2349 South Mary Drive, Visalia. And my mom was a resident. My mom's home was Magnolia Park for the last three and a half years. She passed away April the 13th. My mom lived at home until she was 91, and she fell and broke her ankle and had to have that repaired. At that time, she couldn't go home, and so we started looking for a home for our mother. And when we walked into Magnolia Park, we found my mom's home. And so, when they're talking about these not being residents, these are residents. That was my mother's home for three and a half years. She was treated like a grandmother or like a mother at that home every day by everyone that worked there, everyone that came in contact. When my mom lived at home until she was 91, I visited her just about daily. And when I'd get off work, I'd go and visit her. I did the same thing when she went to Magnolia Park, because that's the kind of daughter I am. And I would visit her at all different hours of day and night. Unfortunately, not very many people do that. So, at nine o'clock at night, even though it's a 24-hour facility, you're not going to see anyone there, except the workers. Somebody talked about having two people go in and out, that maybe that was a way to take care of it. Do you only have two people going in and out of your house during that same time period? How many people are living in your home? Now, I understand the fear of the residents. I understand it, because I might feel that same way. But what I would suggest is to go and see for yourself what Magnolia Park is like for this town. And watch and see. You could go at any time of the day or night, and you're not going to see a great deal of traffic. Unfortunately, there's not very many visitors that go and visit their elderly. So, the fears that I heard today are just unwarranted fears. And you could see that for yourself. I'm sure that Arnold would let you come and tour the facility. They talked about ambulances. For three and a half years, I never once heard any siren of any kind. And like I told you, I was there at different hours of day and night. The only place that I saw anybody being taken to a doctor or something might have been, I did that for my mom. They have one person or a couple people that might take them out of there. My mom was fortunate, she got to go in her own car, because they purchased her car when my mom couldn't drive anymore, and had it where my mom could go places in her own car. These are the kind of people that we're talking about. Unfortunately, something got off on the wrong foot, and I'm really sorry about that, for your sakes. Because I think if you had a chance to have the residents that are at Magnolia Park and the residents that would be in this new thing, and they could be a part of your family, maybe your child could come and visit with them, maybe you could bring your dogs that you're afraid are going to bark in the middle of the night. They probably wouldn't hear them anyway, because most of them have hearing aids and they can't hear very well.
Thank you, ma'am.
They don't use the toilets very often, because most of them are incontinent, and they use diapers.
Thank you.
Okay, those are the people that I would want to have in my community.
Can you wrap it up, please, here?
Yeah, that's it.
I appreciate your comments very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there any rebuttal by staff or the parties to the public testimony as has been presented just now?
Betty Ward, I'm at 3326 East Prosperity. We've heard some very emotional testimony, and I agree with all of them. The difference is, that's a 54-bed facility with lots of staff. This is a rural community with no sidewalks, when he's saying they're going to take them out for a walk. I hope, I mean, and 18 people plus staff in this is not residential. I can, I don't think most of us would have a problem with six-bed. That's residential. Okay? And I think as homeowners, we have a right to speak up on these variances. And I honestly think the Planning Commission should have heard us. They didn't. I mean, it was a done deal, and I'm certainly hoping that it isn't here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vote 1424, Lewis Lane, again. We're not arguing the fact that they give good care. That's not even the point. I'm sure they do. And, but what the point is, is that it's a large facility, it's not zoned for that, it should be zoned for six. We, most of us will not have a problem with a six-bed. There'd be less traffic, less visitors, less need for supplies and such coming in, and it won't impact the water, it won't impact the septic tank, and it won't impact a lot of things when you have less people in there and less employees needed to run that. That is not our issue at all. And I'm sure they have, I empathize what they're doing. I have a mother that's 89-years-old. She lives, happens to live in Quell Park. I appreciate anyone that gives good care. That is not our issue. Not at all. It's just the location, location, location. That size of a facility can disrupt our environment as it is currently today. Thank you.
Okay. Any other final rebuttals?
Well, I just wanted to state for the record that it's not a variance, as stated, and that the use permit does have conditions that have been added to this project. So, it does fit with the zoning with the conditional use permit.
All right. So, I'm making the statement now, this is on our set for closed session, and I want to make a quick explanation for that. When we go into closed session as a board, it's so we can deal with our attorney. So, we have our counsel, we have the opportunity to ask our counsel legal questions about what we have just had happen out here this morning. So, we're going to go into closed session at this time to consult with our counsel. I don't anticipate we'll be in for a long period of time. We will come back out afterwards, and we will then take further action. Thank you, everybody. Our board is back in, back in session, and we have consulted with our counsel, and we are now at the point of the meeting whereby we will have comments made by board members, and then ultimately, we may be taking a vote. Mr. Vannapool?
Okay. Just a, just a few thoughts that I wanted to put out there, and I appreciate everybody coming and making testimony today. I found it very helpful from my perspective. I want to first start off by saying that I did, in fact, speak with Christine Hurd after the Planning Commission hearing. She asked me about what options were available to her. I did let her know that an appeal is, is an option that she's able to take advantage of. But I did tell her that my conversation would stop there, so that I did not compromise myself and my ability to make my decision here today. So, I am disclosing that, and definitely am completely impartial in my decision that I'm going to be making here today. I do think that Arnulfo and Esperanza run an outstanding business, just from the comments that were made here today. I do not want that to be taken into question at all. I think that every person in their final years deserves a place to call home and to be taken care of and cared for like, like a family member. There is a lack of healthcare facilities here in our county, and there are other businesses in the area. However, what I will say is, there are also other homes in the area. And although it is a private item, I won't really address the CCNRs, because that's something that the homeowners can handle separately. Personally, being very familiar with this part of the county, since I live very, very close, I know the type of neighborhood that this is, and I know the agricultural uses in the area. And while we are short of healthcare facilities, I think there's, there's a right place for these facilities, and there's a wrong place. And from my specific perspective, for many of the reasons that were mentioned here today, I, I don't think that this is at, proposed at the 18-bed level is the right fit for this area. I think a six-bed facility would fit in and not even be recognizable, but I do think that an 18-bed facility will be recognizable in the area. And I actually don't think that it's the best place for a senior care facility out of all available areas within the county. So, that's my perspective. Mr. Chair?
Okay. Thank you all to who spoke today. I think a big thing is, there's a fear. A lot of time, there's fear of an unknown or something new. I heard about many vehicles coming and going. Staff will not be there at, all at the same time. There's up to, you know, 12 staff, but as Mr. Gonzalez said, there may be three during the day, two at the night, which is, for that type of facility, according, you know, you have to go by state law and whatnot, is a sufficient amount of staff. I've got to look at my notes here. I don't believe that, at first, I thought, wow, 18 people with two bathrooms, that's, that's not going to work. But now, hearing that there will be, you know, additions and rooms added and whatnot, I'm, I'm fine with that. As I said, I've, I've worked in the healthcare world for 30 years prior to being on the Board of Supervisors. I've worked and know about board and cares and assisted livings, and if something like that was going to move into my neighborhood, I, I wouldn't mind so much. Especially, you know, here we are, it's, it's World Elder Month, Elder Abuse Month, and here we are debating whether or not we should have a, a facility that's going to care for our elderly in a, in a way that they deserve. And so, I, I will be supporting this, based on previous, the other facility that I'm aware of here in Visalia that runs very well, based on what the, the family of people who have had family members at those facilities, having had family members at various other facilities like this, this is something that is needed. I look at the map, we talk about rural areas of Tulare County, it's really not that far away from the city limits of Tulare. It's probably, what, less than a mile from the target there on Mooney and Prosperity? I, you know, I see in the future that, that area right there, especially with Mooney Boulevard being a, a regional retail corridor, especially in Visalia, but moving south into Tulare area, there may be a day where there's major retail development in that area. So, it's, it's not so rural to me. So, I will be supporting this.
Supervisor Crocker?
I just have one question for staff. Just, I appreciate Supervisor Shucklian's comments as far as relation to this, but just for me to get a little bit of a better bearing as far as the location of this site, does the Old Santa Fe Railroad run to the north of this community? No? That's south? Okay.
The old trail is.
Okay.
The road tracks have been taken out.
Thank you.
But the trail, the actual walking trail, that is...
That's all my questions.
Thank you. Supervisor Innes?
Yeah, about two and a half, three years ago, I had this same situation in a very exclusive area of Springville. It's called Costa Lakes. They wanted to put an assisting living home in there, and the residents are all up in arms. If you talk to them today, they're so happy that went in there, because it's quiet, they don't see anybody, they don't hear anything. Before, it was going to be a subdivision, an 18-lot subdivision inside the lakes. Assisted living came in, they were even wanting to expand, they've got nobody against that. So, I'll support this today, too.
Thank you. I, I come at this from a little different angle, and I was kind of actually happy that a gentleman asked us about our oath of office. We do take an oath of office. I take it very seriously. That oath of office is to protect the Constitution of the United States. One of the key provisions of, of the Constitution of the United States is that of private property rights. In this case, we have been, one of the benefits I like about special use permits are that it gives people the ability to put restrictions on use of property. The only real ultimate reason why government should be engaged in people's private property rights is to prevent nuisances. Nuisances are historic. They even go predating the Constitution. So, if you had a nuisance, you had a right as a private property owner to take action against your neighbor if what they did constituted a nuisance. So, with special use permits, what we really try to do is prevent that from happening. So, by going through and examining and evaluating, what are the different types of issues? And you've raised them all today, whether it's traffic, whether it's water and the natural resources, whether it's noise, these are the kinds of issues that could become nuisances. And so, with special use permits, the effort is made to identify what the nuisances might be, to mitigate them, so that they do not become nuisances, and then we go on our merry way. In this case, I, I understand the concerns of the neighborhood. There was a statement made by somebody who said, "If you want this next to you, you know, that'd be fine." That's not the issue, really. It's not whether I want it next to me. It's really about what is the private property rights of the person that's next to me. And I'm leaving aside your CCNRs, because again, that's not something we're here to judge. We here judge today on the basis of the facts of the information we have and the law. And the law says, this is an allowable use when you go through the special use process, and if you determine that there's not going to be a nuisance, in my world, you get the ability to do, use your property. And that, and that's the case here. Water was brought up, traffic was brought up, different issues of sound and so forth. I believe these have all been addressed. And when I look at this property and the fact that the access and egress and ingress is completely out of your neighborhood on a major highway that has thousands of cars, including emergency vehicles, going up and down it every day and all hours of the night, I don't know that you would even know what's going on in this property from where you all live. From the water consumption standpoint, I'm looking at a property next door to it that's got three times the yard that this property has in it, they're using tremendous amounts of water. This, and I think we've, we've seen that, that water's really been properly, properly addressed. Noise has been talked about, and I, and we want to make that a condition about, if that's a possibility, of making a condition that the no use of sirens coming in. I'm not opposed to that, because obviously, the property owner's not opposed to it either, if we have the ability to actually, to do that. As it is then, as I've heard the facts today, the information, and I do not want to come across as not understanding the concerns of the neighborhoods, in my belief, my responsibility is to protect private property rights. If this was your property and you wanted to do this with it, I'd be protecting your private property rights. And many of you have businesses there, and so it's important for you to have your private, private property rights protected as well. So, I will be supporting this project on that basis. So, I would at this time entertain a motion.
I move to approve staff's recommendation.
Do you want to include that provision without the noise?
I think that's in there. Oh, okay.
You can add a condition of the sirens without, you know, this, this stuff.
Okay. Is that all right?
That's, that's fine.
Motion? Seconded. Motion by Supervisor Crocker, seconded by Supervisor Innes. Please cast your votes. Votes are four to one in favor, Crocker, Shucklian, Worthley, Innes voting in favor, and Vannapool voting against. That will conclude our meeting, and that concludes the public hearing.
We...
We have another item.
I know, we're not done with the meeting, though. We're just done with this issue.
You said, you said that'll conclude our meeting.
I'm sorry, that concluded that item of our meeting. All right. We're going to, we're going to push on and finish up here, so we can all get on with our lives. And that will take us to our untimed item number three, and that's a request from the Resource Management Agency to receive a presentation regarding the River Rivers Historical Society's planned museum expansion.
33?
33.
33.
I'm sorry, what did I say? 33.
Afternoon.
It's morning somewhere. It's morning at River, which is happy to have this item considered today. This will be a white presentation with Paul Marshall, the president.
It's morning somewhere. Uh, it's morning at Three Rivers, which is happy to have this site considered today. Uh, this will be a light presentation with Tom Marshall, the president of the Three Rivers Historical Society, and his name, right? So, we're here today with a request-
Eric, you can't be heard, can you pull your microphone? Microphone not working?
Speak into the mic.
Yeah, speak into it. Well, there, it was off.
Hello? Okay.
I think Julieta saw you coming up there, and she turned it off.
There was a reason for that, exactly.
Keep going, Eric, keep going.
We all work for Julieta.
Your three minutes are still going.
So, okay, Eric Coyne, um, Deputy County Administrator, Tom Marshall, President of the, uh, Three Rivers Historical Society. We're here today to discuss, um, the museum there, the society's, uh, plans for, uh, expanding their museum and also to talk about, uh, public restrooms. So, of course, I'm, oh, here we go. Restrooms have been a topic of discussion for the two decades I've worked for the county and before. Uh, this has been a, uh, an issue that the community has voiced a concern about, uh, as long as I can remember. Uh, it's been, uh, also something that has come, uh, forward recently as a response to, uh, request of the Supervisor Crocker and, uh, to the staff, to me. Restrooms have been proposed several different places. One of the things that has been a barrier to this is where and, and who would operate them and who would, uh, who would maintain them. We think we have some answers to that, we think we have a proposal that, uh, has merit. So, the Three Rivers Historical Society operates the Three Rivers Museum, uh, which has got a very popular visitor's center, uh, gift shop, and is also, um, uh, an important waypoint as for the two million-plus visitors that journey up to Sequoia and Kings, um, Kings Canyon National Parks. The Historical Society has been talking for some time about enhancing their visitor's center and expanding, uh, their exhibit space. One of this is, you're gonna hear more about this, is a, is a plan to add about thirty-four hundred square feet of visitor's space and to add some public restrooms. The museum has been open for seventeen years now. It, uh, has gone through quite a growth period. As you could see here, we just pulled some records that, uh, the society pulled together. They've grown from more than fifty, fifty-four hundred visitors in twenty-fifteen, uh, to all, more than double that, uh, twelve thousand seven hundred and seventeen. They're the second visitor Sequoia shuttle stop right now. Almost thirteen, fourteen percent of all shuttle visitors, uh, make a reservation and hop on the shuttle at the Three, the Three Rivers dislocation to go up to the national parks. One out of three visitors that are referred to the museum are referred by local businesses so that people could use the restrooms. With no public facilities, traditionally, what's happened is people overwhelm the local business community. And, uh, that's great, uh, if they're buying something, if not, then, then, uh, it's been a perennial complaint that's come to the Board of Supervisors and staff, uh, how can we, how can we provide a burden, uh, relieve that burden? Um, so, the supervisor invited me after he had a meeting, uh, with the society to, uh, facilitate a discussion and see if we could come up the plan to how to address this, how to come forward with a reasonable proposal. Working with the society, uh, they've developed kind of a two-part plan to, uh, own and operate the restrooms. They're basically, in essence, asking for the county's support to help construct them and then they would, through a memorandum of, of understanding, commit to operate and maintain them and keep them available to the public. We have talked about doing that, uh, how would we do that if you choose to move forward? Uh, we would, basically, uh, once you decide that that is a project and you, that's something you would support, we would facilitate this through Capital Projects. I've talked to the Capital Projects General Services Director, um, John Hess, and we put together a plan where they would manage the construction and the bidding and the, um, oversee that construction. The society has invested quite a bit of time in this project already as they try to do their feasibility analysis and how to do this and what they wanted to do. And, uh, I think that Tom is gonna walk us through that, how they came to have an architect, how they've had quite a few meetings to decide what they wanted to do and what some of these pieces would look like.
We've been working for about two and a half years at trying to develop this whole concept of what we're doing on our property. We have about three and a half acres. As part of it, um, we decided we wanted to get started on it, so we have had the engineering done on the septic system, we have had, um, uh, the information done on the well that we have. Surprisingly enough, we found a well on the property that was dug in nineteen ninety-five, so we don't have the expense of going to another new well, which, uh, is fortunate. But, um, we have looked into the, uh, concept of putting the well together, we have all of our prices, we've done that. Our architect, we have, uh, engaged over the past several months to actually develop the, uh, restroom concept and our future barn program, and that would be the phase two and possibly into phase three. But, um, we, we do, uh, we do think that it's feasible, uh, there are, just, not to mention the land alone, uh, we figure that the value of the land that we have that will be used for the restrooms and eventually the barn, uh, the value of that is about seventy-five thousand dollars as far as part of the overall, uh, commitment that we're doing to it from the Historical Society. So, I, I think we're on the right track as far as trying to get things done ahead of time. And we, like I said, we have been meticulously planning this out for at least two years.
I'm, I'm just gonna go back for a minute to the site plan that, uh, Tom and, uh, the society board members put together. This talks about kind of their grand vision. You'll see kind of on the lower right, the two, uh, blue dots, that's the old well and the new well. And so, they're, they, they have, uh, the existing museum, uh, and as it's getting quite a bit more use than, than they anticipated, they want to take the time now, uh, to improve their water system. They've been working with the state board and currently, they have a boil water notice. They have a problem that they need to improve, and so, they have gone and, uh, independently had an assessment done, worked through the state board to develop a plan, and they're talking about around thirty thousand dollars, I think it is, to improve that, uh, increase the overall capacity so that they would, uh, be much more sustainable. And, uh, in addition to that, they're looking at, uh, increasing their fire storage, not only for their existing, uh, facility, but with an eye towards the, uh, uh, the restrooms won't use that much water, but, uh, for, the, prepare for the worst and, and hopefully, uh, the, uh, something that they can avoid, which would be a fire with the new exhibit space. So, you'll see that, the, the yellow triangle or the yellow square down at the bottom is where they would improve their septic system. They've gone through and had it surveyed, they have an approved design to meet the, um, uh, they've been working with RMA and, uh, especially Mike Washam and his staff to make sure that they would meet all future requirements, and so, they have that all engineered out. They also, if you could see near the middle bottom, you'll see the green square, which is where the restrooms would actually, excuse me, that's where the restrooms would be, and then there's a pathway to, from the, the, um, handicap parking. So, um... While the drawing shows this immediately adjacent, that's where the restrooms were in version one, the society has decided it would be, uh, more convenient and more accessible to move it a short distance away, near, closer to the parking.
I, I have a quick question, Eric.
Yes.
Uh, sir, is the, uh, I guess I was having a different visual of, of how this would be, obviously, it's gotta be off the highway, Sierra Drive there, but is that, is that pavement that leads up to where the, where the, um, restrooms are going to be located or is that part of the process, project?
The, the road going through the property, as you can see by the, the curved road and then goes all the way up to the museum, that's all gravel, but the, the, uh, ADA parking would actually be down towards that curved area.
On the lower end.
That would be, that would be, uh, concrete pad in there, according to the design, and then the concrete walkway would go from there up to the, um, restrooms themselves.
All right.
Yeah, in fact, uh, the interesting thing about, we've really not wanted to put asphalt or concrete drive through the whole property because we're, being a historical museum, that road through the property is one of the original stage stops for the Mineral King Road.
Very good. So, but it's an all-weather trap, uh, all-weather gravel road?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
One thing we did, working collaboratively, just as we would with economic development, our team, to make sure that a developer is meeting all the requirements and is, uh, doing the right best practice, not only by code but by, by design. Um, Mike Washam facilitated a design, uh, meeting. We also brought in Dennis Lehman to make absolutely sure that our chief building official would be comfortable that we'd met all ADA. So, uh, on, on this proposal, real quickly, uh, we don't have a slide about it, but we costed this out at about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We had that reviewed by Capital Projects to make sure be, uh, that we would be covered with a proper ten percent contingency to, to meet prevailing wage and all the other requirements when public funds are involved. That will do the, uh, in the most simplistic sense, it does the grading, it does the site prep, it does the, uh, flatware around the restroom and the walkway, but it will leave the pad for the larger building alone, okay? Uh, phase one is the restrooms, and the society intentionally did that because there's an overwhelming need for these now, and they wanted them to be put in a service as quickly as possible. One of the things that they're starting right now, they've actually, they were gonna use this as a kickoff, but they've already been meeting, um, with donors as, as far as the fundraising for the new building. The, the new building and, uh, the, uh, the, part of that, he, he alluded to a possible third phase, it's twenty-four hundred square feet on the bottom, there's a storage loft that would be another thousand square feet. They may decide to build out the bottom and, and shell the building and then build out and access the storage loft later, depending on their funding and depending on whatever their, their, their timeline is internally. But, we, we're anticipating, uh, working with John Hess, we estimated it could take as long as eighteen months to fully go through the bid process and, and, and make sure we have the lowest responsive bidder, get through the construction. The construction period is gonna be relatively short, I think we said about a hundred and eighty days. The question is, we wanna, we'd rather overestimate and be early than have a delay. So, while we're, while we're constructing the restrooms, the society has a pretty vigorous plan to hold special events, to, to, uh, to do some fundraising and us work, working towards raising the capital to do phase two. And phase two will, will, will move forward independent of phase one, uh, based on their timing, their, their cash flow and that kind of thing.
And the fundraising, yes.
But, Tom could elaborate more. What we don't show here, they've, they've already got the thirty thousand on hand and as soon as they anticipating success today, they're ready to contract to make the water system improvements, okay? The septic would be part of the bathroom project, so that, uh, basically, their water system would be upgraded for their existing facility and the pipes would be there to hook up to the new building so they could provide water to the new restrooms when we're ready. But, over and above that, they've already raised, um, close to a thousand dollars, actually a little more than a thousand, give or take.
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand, excuse me. Towards, yeah, it's a long day, it's a long day, I'm still on the last item. But, um, and then the other thing that we've determined, uh, since we prepared the staff report, is the fire chief met with, uh, um, and reviewed all the plans with the architect, determined that they need eight thousand gallons of fire storage. So, they'll, they'll do the water system in their tank and have that ready to go.
All right. Any other question, are there questions for board members? Carter, you wanna say something?
Just, uh, some comments, and, um, one, I wanna thank, uh, the effort to get to this point today. Um, looking through, uh, the old files that my predecessor had left me, I found files on, uh, a similar type project that went back to nineteen ninety-five, uh, regarding, uh, the effort to try and get a, a formal rest stop and a scenic high, uh, it was under the, the auspices of a scenic highway, uh, corridor for one ninety-eight and, uh, utilizing Caltrans, um, so Bill Sanders was involved with that, uh, so three or two supervisors ago. Um, this is, this is something that, uh, when we've been meeting over the last year and a half, um, that, uh, I, I wanted to ensure that, that the community was involved and engaged, they've shown that willingness, they've, they've got skin in the game, um, and they're going to continue to, to have that skin in the game. Um, there's, there's, uh, a great benefit, not just for this community, but really, this is more of a regional asset, as far as I'm concerned. Uh, people that utilize the Sequoia Shuttle are from, out of our area, uh, primarily, and, uh, many individuals that are staying here in Visalia that are, that are going to be able to have the use of just, uh, you know, being able to relieve themselves, uh, and so, uh-
What a relief.
Yeah, and what a relief, exactly. Um, so, I, I think it's, it's, it's a great benefit for, from a tourism standpoint, from the business community, um, they don't ha, you know, the septic system, um, in, uh, in Three Rivers, it, it doesn't necessarily, it, this isn't something that's necessarily easy for, um, for this community where it might be a non-issue in many other communities. So, uh, I appreciate that we're at this point, um, and, uh, I know there's quite a few people out in the room, um, so maybe if there's a spokesperson or two that, that, uh, might summarize it, I know Tom has, has done a great job, um, then I, I would, I would defer to the-
Sure. If anybody, uh, the public wants to, to address this matter?
I would like to just make a comment, if I could.
Sure.
Um, we have received letters, uh, from different businesses in Three Rivers supporting our idea of the public restrooms, uh, which, and even more so, I have received letters from the Superintendent of Sequoia National Park in support of the program, also from the, uh, Director of the Corps of Engineers at Lake Coia, so we have both ends to our town, so to speak, that are in full favor of this project and the economic impact and how it's going to help the health and safety within our community and affecting these two federal agencies.
Very good. Good morning.
Hi. Good morning. I am Cindy Howell Oviedo and I am the General Manager at Three Rivers Community Services District. Nice to finally meet you, Tyler.
No cows to speak of.
I know, when the cow thing is done, yeah. Um, so, Tom came to CSD, um, a couple of months ago and showed us this amazing PowerPoint, and I cannot tell you how it just touched all of our hearts. Public restrooms, I've lived in Three Rivers since I was two, have been an issue, and if we can really get this up and going, it would be a huge thing. Um, CSD, um, in the past, has tried this and it's not, it's failed, I don't know what happened, I've only been on board for eight years now, um, but we had a little fund tucked away from previous attempts for public restrooms, and there was, um, no doubt in our mind that we wanted to help him, um, get going, so we donated twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars to strictly get the wells up and running, and I've been working with Tom and State, um, State Resources Control Board, um, on helping get the wells up and running, um, helping Tom with water issues and, and the permitting process. So, CSD is definitely behind this and we will continue to be behind it in any way that you, um, tell us how we can help, and, um, we just, we're, we're thrilled and we hope that you guys all are, 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 help us with this issue also. So, anyways, that's it.
We were absolutely thrilled when they came to us in our meeting and said-
I bet you were.
-we have this fund that we would like you to do something with.
Yeah, kinda jealous that he did it before us, but it doesn't matter, it's a community effort and wherever we can get the rest- It's a community effort, and wherever we can get the restrooms and whoever started it, that's not the issue. It's just, we wanna help the town. So anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I don't know if you all want to speak, but could I, could we at least ask the, some of the society members, the Historical Society members, to stand and the people from Three Rivers? If you do want to say something else, you can.
If you want to speak, come on up, though, yeah, absolutely.
Very good. Did you want to say something, ma'am?
I actually just came 'cause.
Give us your name, please.
I'm sorry, Gloria Park. And I go to the Governmental Affairs Meeting in Tulare as often as I can, and Pete mentioned the meeting today, and I usually can't come on a Tuesday morning, but I was able to come. But as a resident of Tulare and an avid motorcycle rider, I have to say how many times we have gone to Three Rivers, and, and I hate to say it, I know I should be, you know, paying to the businesses there, but how many times I've bought something so that I can use their restroom.
Well, that's, you're losing business, though.
Yeah, I know. But, you know, I would, you know, I completely understand, and then, and because I have had that need many times in the area, that I appreciate this. I think it's a really cool deal. Thanks.
Well, you lucked out. You picked a doozy of a meeting.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, I know.
Well, I don't live too far from where the other, that happened too, so.
I just wanted to say, although we didn't, it's not, it's not in our presentation, but when I look, and we haven't even talked about the pot of funds from which this money would come, but when we look at transient occupancy taxes that are generated in the county, which we turn over to our general fund, to me, this is what, which they should be used for. I mean, the idea that you raise, you generate these taxes from the public, the, the people who come through, the tourists and tourism, and this is how you give back and reinvest those funds in the community to actually promote more tourism and encourage, you know, viable growth there. So I, I, I'm very much in favor of this project. I don't, I don't know of any member of the board that feels differently. Maybe, maybe Pete does.
I don't feel differently at all. I'm very, very supportive of this, and I was just gonna make the same comment that you were. This is money that has been generated by the area and the tourism that goes to enjoy the park and enjoy Three Rivers. It's nice to see that money, or some of that money reinvested into the community, and I do appreciate the quasi-public-private partnership. Nice to see the museum coming forward with the society with skin in the game, and really shows that we're all in this thing together to help better the Three Rivers community and better the tourism and what that brings for our county. So I'm very supportive.
It'll, it'll be nice not to worry about poison oak and rattlesnakes anymore when I need to use a restroom in Three Rivers. Nowhere to go.
We usually go through the property every week or so and, and try to talk the snakes out of staying away.
Okay, good, thank you.
Fortunately, we haven't had any this year, so we're doing okay.
It doesn't work with poison oak, but Roundup does. Okay, is there any other questions or comments? Not entertain a motion?
I move to approve staff's recommendation, and that includes working on the MOU for maintenance.
Right, so we have a motion by Supervisor Crocker, seconded by Supervisor Shuckman. Please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous. That takes us to item number thirty, thank you, thank you. That takes us to item number 35 and 36. I think you can get through them both pretty quickly.
Yes. Good afternoon, Board, Council, CAO, and Clerk. Item 35 and 36 are very similar items. I will take them separately briefly just for voting purposes. Item 35 requests from Board of Supervisors staff to consider, modify as needed, and approve the responses to the 2017-2018 Tulare County Grand Jury Final Report entitled, "Show Me the Records." No, I don't choose these titles. They are chosen by the grand jury. So since this report and draft response was already included in the agenda, which was posted online in your packets and a copy made available to the public, we put this on on time simply to ask if you have any changes, amendments, comments you want to make on these responses. If you do, please share them at this time. If you don't, I would ask for a motion to move forward with this letter.
Just one question, Mr. Chair. Mentioned that there was a, that we, that we set up a process or a system. What, what was the system that we set up to monitor these requests, PRA requests?
I'm gonna turn to our Chief Clerk, Melinda Benton, and have her chime in on this since we collaborated on this response.
Well, the ways from God.
Basically, the issue, the concern was originally was we didn't have files. They were just all in one. So now what we do is they come directly to me. I then create a hard file for that individual file, and the responses or the requested letters go out, and they're all in one file, along with keeping track of the dates that the response is due. That is the new process. Originally, it just went into one file and, you know, whoever responded, that kind of thing, which kind of led to a mish, mishap and not, I guess, responding timely. That's our process. You have.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, entertain a motion. Motion by Supervisor Innis, seconded by Supervisor Shuckman. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous in support of the motion. On to 36.
36, with the Martinez Chief of Staff. Once again, I'm here to request the Board of Supervisors to consider, modify as needed, and approve the responses to the 2017-2018 Tulare County Grand Jury Final Report entitled, "Where is Trust, Transparency, Transparency and Accountability?" Same as item number 35, the draft response letter and the report were included on the agenda online, a copy in our office and in your packets. So at this time, I ask if you have any amendments or changes. I will take those at this time.
Are there any suggestions? Not?
No, I, I would just say that this has been one of the efforts that the Board of Supervisors and County Council's Office and other departments now are folding into this as well to really help provide training and additional skill sets for the various special district board members throughout the county. And it's a constantly evolving process, but one towards improvement and betterment for all the residents in the county. With that, I would move for approval if there's no further. Comment by the board or public comment.
Motion by Supervisor Vanderpoel, seconded by Supervisor.
Shuckman.
Shuckman. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. That does conclude our open session. We have reason for closed session, council.
To Chairman, item A was already heard in closed session, and there is no report out on that item. Items B and D are off calendar. That leaves item C, and I do not expect an announcement out.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you all for being here today.
Crap, this doesn't fit.
I did.
It's down here.
You've got a calendar.